I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners regular meeting for July the 8th to order. And if you'll join me in an invocation in our pledge. Father God, we come to you this afternoon, Father, looking for guidance and insight as we deal with the business of Brunswick County. Father, we know that there's a lot of challenges within our communities and we certainly need assistance in addressing all of those, Father. Father, we thank you for this weekend and last week of Independence Celebration, Father. How important freedom is to everyone and for our ability to even be here this afternoon, Father. And for that, we recognize those that have served, Father, to provide us our rights for freedom. We recognize our public safety today, Father, that's our law enforcement, our EMS, our firefighters, that continue to provide protection for all of our communities, Father. And Father, we want to remember one of our retirees, Father, that passed away this week as well, Susan Gurganus. Wonderful lady, Father, and we just ask that you be with her family during this time and provide comfort. And we ask all these things in your holy and precious name.
Amen.
All right, are there any adjustments to the agenda or do I have? Right, motion in a second, all in favor, right? All right, that was our time for public comment. And during public comment, there was a sign sheet that was outside the door, I have it in front of me now. Each speaker is provided a three-minute opportunity to provide information to the commissioners. If you have anything that is a written format or something that you want to provide us, a document, please provide that to the clerk and the clerk will make sure that she gets that to us. This is your time to share and we just ask that it continue to be civilly and orderly. It is not a Q and A or a town hall, so we're not going to have an interaction with you back and forth. But if there's an issue that needs to be directed to administration to address, then we'll certainly do that. Having said that, go to the list and the first name on the list is Mary Ann Harris. So if you'll come up, provide us with your name and address and share with us.
My name is Mary Ann Harris and my address is eight seven three five Southern Homestead Trail Ash, North Carolina. I have.
Can you move the mic a little closer to?
Is it good now?
Better.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have the Executive Director of Homestead Animal Rescue and I'm here not only to represent myself, but to represent the other local rescues in our area. I had recently emailed all of you the paperwork and the information that I'm going to speak about for you to look over, but it was before the holidays, so I don't know if you've all had a chance to review it, but you have all the data and all the information on it. The first issue I would like to talk about is the possibility of implementing a public advisory board for animal welfare, which could possibly consist of one commissioner, the sheriff, somebody from the animal control rescue group or a rescue representative that would be open to the public. And the benefits of that would be to discuss different issues that the rescues are struggling with, that the shelter is dealing with, that we can all unite and find ways to solve a lot of these problems, which would help reduce the amount of work for the animal control. It would help to educate the public. We have a, we're having a real big struggle with educating the public on spay and neuter and the dangers of leaving your animal in direct sunlight. The second issue that I want to talk about is if we can implement a shade law that would protect our animals in our county. As elected officials, I know you have the power to implement and change our ordinances. And right now, we don't have an ordinance that provides, that implements a shade cover for dogs. A lot of people don't realize, but the plastic iglues and the plastic barrels and wooden dog houses in direct sunlight are extremely dangerous. A blue barrel will get up to 130 degrees today. A igloo, which says it's good for all weather, will get up to 110 degrees today. A wooden dog house will be over 100 degrees. Their water is left out, it's 100 degrees, they can't drink it. It is a terrible death. They will suffer first dehydration. If the animal's not healthy, it will go into seizures and possibly die. It would be a very easy fix if we could just have, it's not anyone's fault. The sheriffs do not have the tools they need because we don't have a law. They can't go out as of now if someone's leaving a dog in direct sunlight like today and their water's in the sunlight, they can't do anything about it because we don't have that law. So I am begging you to possibly move forward as quickly as possible to implement a shade law. I have a case right now that the public is outraged over. Is that my timer?
Thank you so much, appreciate that. And our county attorney, Brian, can you contact the sheriff's attorney and along with sheriff? And y'all look over the ordinance that we have in place and either get with Ms. Harris, either have a meeting and get with her and go over the ordinance just to make sure that we are touching the issues that her group is running into out there. If y'all can do that and the time is an essence apparently, so if y'all could.
It really is.
Especially for one of the cases that she shared with me. So if we could, if we could address that.
Especially with the temperatures right now.
Very helpful.
I appreciate that.
And I understand that the sheriff has Ms. Harris's contact.
Yes, we have had the discussion. Because we just don't have it defined as what is adequate shelter doesn't include shade. What is adequate water doesn't say that, you know, that it can't be in direct sunlight. And unfortunately, it's just educating the public and we need the tools in order to enforce it.
So let's see if we can do that with our ordinance and help out a little bit. I know one case she was telling me about where we've sent officers out there four times and the situation hasn't changed. So let's see if our ordinance.
I have a very sad victim who cries. Imagine your house being built next door and you had to get up every day and look at this dog. This dog, this is your home and your daughter's crying. They've been there six o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night, three days in a row. No one showed up for that dog. It's still out there. It's panicking, it's in distress.
Anyway, thank you again. All right, Jean Tonner?
Jean Tonner, thirty-seven fifty-three Selwyn Circle. Good afternoon. Today's presentation includes tree landscaping and green space and transportation development U D O amendments. We appreciate your moving forward on these, so thank you very much. We hope they will contain appropriately measured as it relates to flooding, stormwater management and traffic control. However, I'm very concerned that it's been almost two years and we have yet to see the performance standards necessary to ensure development that occurs on the Casale Aquifer is appropriately regulated. It has been two years. Why the delay? This is especially concerning as development is currently happening on the Aquifer. So developments have been approved, but we don't have performance standards. This delay is unacceptable and appears to be purposeful and for the benefit of developers to the detriment of residents. Sincerely, I request that you move forward on the performance standards and consider the health and safety of residents over the profit of developers. Thank you.
Thank you. And in that regard, Mr. Stone, can you, can you provide the commissioners with an update? Whenever you were able to talk to utilities and provide us with an update of where we're at today with the performance standards for the ownership?
Yes, sir. The consultant that was engaged to help develop our standards is forwarded traps to utilities and plenty of them. And they're ready to move forward with it shortly.
Okay, well, anything that you can bring to us so that we can be up to speed on it, that would probably help. And certainly, so we should be able to see them at one of our upcoming meetings?
I think there's a meeting July the sixteenth.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. All right, Jenny Prunty?
My name is Jenny Prunty, five nine zero six Dutchman Creek Road in Southport. At the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners meeting on Monday, April first, commissioners voted unanimously to send a letter to the General Assembly asking for the authority to preserve heritage trees and limit clearcutting in new developments that are bigger than 25 acres. Of course, this would not apply to forestry timber or agriculture activities. For that, I applaud the commissioners for doing that. The county's request was sent to our local legislative delegation, including Representative Charlie Miller, Representative Frank Byer and Senator Bill Raben. A copy was sent to Representative Tim Moore, Speaker of the House and Senator Phil Berger, Senate Pro Tem. Upon inquiring upon where the request stands now, I was told to date that no action has been taken on the request in either chamber. In a follow-up, Representative Miller said it was under consideration, whatever that means. The speed of considering such matters by our state representatives varies greatly as was shown by the record speed with which Representative Miller filed original House Bill 1063 on May seventh, eliminating Southport's ETJ, then combined it with other local bills in House Bill 911 for its quick passage on June 28th. Seems like the outcry of county citizens regarding the recent massive clearing of land that's occurred in this county, it seems that our county elected officials should be more proactive in advocating and pressuring our elected North Carolina representatives and senators to provide this authority for your request. Thank you.
Thank you. And one more thing, Mr. Manager, if you could, if you could get us an update on where that stands. I realize that they're out of the short session now, but kind of get us an idea of what their billing is. So see what we need to do around here. Thank you. That's all I had signed up for public comments, so we'll move into the consent agenda.
Unless someone has something that they won't pull, anybody have anything you want to pull?
A second?
Motion in a second, all in favor, right? All right, so that brings us to presentations. And I believe this afternoon, we're going to have a presentation from the Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern North Carolina. Please feel free to come forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Hilson Hardy. And first, I would like to thank the Brunswick County Commissioners for allowing me to present before today. I am a rising educator who attended the Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern North Carolina and was picked to represent Brunswick County at the 2024 Youth Voice Summit, which will be held in Forside County later this month. The purpose of the Boys and Girls Club is to encourage youth ages five through eighteen to reach their full potential by creating and learning opportunities that will help them become productive and responsible adults. The Boys and Girls Club is a catalyst for leadership development skills, personal accountability and workforce development programming specifically in teams. Leaders and community youth all within the club to get a more hands-on experience by helping them acquire more skills. In closing, I would like to show three examples of how the Boys and Girls Club has helped teams elevate their lives. First, Ziani. Ziani was a shy kid coming to the club for the very first time. After being at the club for a while, the staff encouraged her to become more social, which led her to make new friends. Once her summer job started, it led her to have more hands-on experience. Ziani learned the new skills which prepared her for her job this year and also new opportunities. Second, Helen. She was nervous and shy because she doesn't like talking to people and she was just very nervous. Eventually, she spoke to others, especially when she started her summer job last year. Staff encouraged Helen to become more engaged and exposed her to new opportunities with club leaders, such as Mr. Hicks and Ms. Leandra. And lastly, me. When I first came to the club, I was also very nervous and I didn't talk to a lot of people. But the more youth and staff I talked to, I talked to others and was open to more opportunities and took more shows, which allowed me to communicate to other club leaders, which helped me make more opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, and we will see you in a few slides down.
And before you go, yeah, before you go, guys, let's get down and get a picture with the God. All right, moving right along, next up is planning and proposed U D O ordinance text amendments. All right, welcome, sir.
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. I have my planning director, Kirsty Dixon, behind me in case there's any clarity that needs to be added. But I've initiated this from the beginning with you guys, so I'm going to stick it through to the end. And today, we're going to cover a lot of very technical items. So I hope everybody's bandwidth is open and available and ready. We've got 30-plus slides for us to go through.
Oh, joy.
I will try my best to keep it at a high level, but at the same time, I want to pay respect to the text amendments that have been proposed. As well as the input, I want to try to fairly and account for the input received from both the residents and the development community as I go through this. So bear with me, feel free to ask any questions along the way and hopefully we can knock this out before I pass out. No joke, nobody laugh. I got my county attorney to laugh, got my county attorney to laugh, so there we go, we're good enough. All right, so what we're going to do today is review the timeline and process used by staff to create these proposed text amendments. Again, this is informational only. This meeting is intended to just get feedback from you guys and talk through the intent of how we have come to the conclusions that we have in terms of the recommendations. And then from there, we'll get feedback from you guys on next steps to take. So how did we get to where we are today? Beginning in the fall of last year, staff received direction from the board to develop solutions to begin to address the citizens' concerns related to clearcutting and tree standards. That was happening at both the planning board level as well as our Board of Commissioner meetings as well. So from there, staff started to work and create potential solutions to address these problems. A community meeting was held in December where we had over 140 participants from both the public and the development community to receive their feedback and understand exactly what the concerns were. And again, help narrow down our focus when it comes to creating the proposed text amendments. During that winter time, December to January, staff took that input that they received and developed recommendations. Those recommendations in terms, they were at a high level at that point in time in December and January, from a very high level. Here are the things that we think we can accomplish using the U D O and zoning tools that we have available to us. One of those was special legislation via the Tree Authority, as was just mentioned earlier. But these do not have anything to do with those. As our, it was already indicated today, that request is sort of in limbo and up to the decision makers in Raleigh as to where that moves from here. These are local, specific to our U D O and our zoning ordinance. In January, we began to share these recommendations with stakeholder groups. Those stakeholder groups were the development community, ABCPOA Realtor Groups, Brunswick and Wilmington Home Builders Associations, as well as members of the public and planning community who have shown interest in this process along the way. In February, we received direction from the board to expedite specifically the U D O changes related to tree standards. Remember, at the same time, we have a full revision and full rewrite of the modernization of the U D O going on by a private contractor, but we were directed in February to specifically come up with standards to address the tree concerns. In April, those recommendations were taken to our planning board. The planning board provided staff with unanimous support towards the recommendations that were presented to them in April. So in May, planning staff came back to them with these specific word-for-word text amendments based on those recommendations. And I can go ahead and state that during that May meeting, the planning board denied all of the proposed text amendments that you will see here today. They didn't provide staff with any other direction to make amendments or alterations or changes to those. They were simply denied. So we're going to move forward and just make that mental note that the Planning Advisory Board has not supported any of the recommendations that I will present today.
So can we ask you a question?
Sure.
Did the planning board say why?
Not specifically that I'm. So going back to the presentation that was provided to you in February, these were, this is actually the exact slide that was taken from that presentation. So we had six options that we wanted to pursue further with text amendments. I'm not going to go through each of those six, but in large part, the nine text amendments that I am going to go through today kind of addressed the intent of these six recommendations that were proposed here. But we'll say too, that some of these recommendations that you see here were not moved, we did not move forward with. And we did not move forward with those based on feedback that we received from the development community. Some of them, they just simply said would not work for them. And so we tried to get creative with alternative solutions that could, again, achieve the same intent and outcome, but not be as impactful to the development community. So the process that we used, again, staff took a look at the legislative authority. So we wanted to make sure that we have the legal authority to enact these. We also took a look at standards that others around us use. So we looked at Wilmington, New Hanover County. We looked at other jurisdictions across the state. And I'll say that nothing that we have proposed here is groundbreaking, nothing is new, nothing is cutting edge, nothing is anything that other planning organizations across the state have not already implemented. Some have even implemented here within our community, within the municipalities of our community. And some of these are used in the neighboring county in New Hanover County. So again, nothing cutting edge. These are all relatively simple and straightforward best practices from a planning standpoint. Staff throughout the entire time, dating back to the winter of last year, has engaged the development community as well as other stakeholder groups that may have interest in this. The feedback that we have received from the development community to date has simply been, no, we do not support any of these text amendments. We have tried to engage further and ask for specifics or alternatives, alternative recommendations or policies that may meet the same outcome, but maybe do it in a different manner. And to date, we've not really received feedback other than we do not support the recommendations that have, as they are presented today. Again, several changes along the way have been made based on the feedback of not only the residents, but the development community as well as other stakeholder groups trying to find that balance. You know, staff is not here to suggest that all nine of these are the perfect fit for Brunswick County. That's what you guys get to help us walk through and lead us in that direction of what are the right fits for Brunswick County and what worked for us to address the concerns without having, without tilting the scales or negatively impacting the development community along the way. So here's where we get really deep and really technical. I'm going to give a slide that shows each proposed text amendment. Again, I have nine of them, so there will be numbered number one through number nine. I will talk through the intent, the current ordinance that we have in place, the recommendation, and then the development impacts of those. And then on the second slide, I will show you the specific U D O amendment that is presented. So the first one is just simply related to increasing tree and landscape standards. The intent is to promote the preservation of existing trees and/or require the planting of new trees in new development. Our current ordinance does not require any planting requirements for residential lots. We also have limited planting requirements for non-residential or commercial uses. So where this comes into play is unfortunately, we've seen developments take place where home builders come in, clearcut lots, construct homes and walk away without planting a single tree on that single-family residential lot. That doesn't apply for most residential builders. Most residential builders understand the importance of having mature landscaping on their site. So if the lot is clearcut, they're often coming back and replacing those or planting new plants, new trees on those lots. But unfortunately, we can point to certain situations where developers are planting no trees at the conclusion of a single-family home construction. So that's really the root of what we're trying to accomplish here with this particular ordinance is set a new standard, a new requirement for trees on single-family or two-family lots. So with there not being any current requirement whatsoever, the recommendation is to require a minimum of three trees per single-family or two-family lot. These can be placed anywhere on the lot. They can be in the front yard, side yard, backyard, it does not matter. Whatever is, it's entirely up to the developer to decide where those best fit in terms of driveway, street frontage that they may have on that particular lot. There is also.
Question on that hand. We have a, it's in the neighborhood where my dad lives, throughout the country. Somebody is developing what has been a cornfield for my entire life and there's never been a tree on it. Are they going to be, if this were to be adopted, they'd be required to put trees where none currently exist?
Yes, sir. So if it's been clearcut and they come forward, and this would apply to only, again, not necessarily, see if I got it in here specifically listed, but yes, they would be required to plant a tree on a lot if it was completely clearcut out in the middle of the country. One, two, three, whatever we decide on. And that's again, that's a recommendation here is to have, require three. The number could be two, the number could be one, whatever we feel is most appropriate. Right now, the requirement is zero. On the commercial side, we would require a minimum of fifteen trees per disturbed acre, exempting business and industrial parks. Again, that was feedback that we got from the development community and that made sense to exempt those types of uses. But the biggest thing for both of these is existing trees can be counted towards this requirement. So Commissioner Williams, in your instance, it may be a cornfield and completely raised, but there may be an existing tree already on that lot, on the perimeter of that lot as.
It's about 60 acres of a cornfield with nothing on it.
Nothing on it.
Less corn camps is a tree.
Yeah, if they were to plant one, you know, build one house in the middle of that cornfield, they would be required to plant three new trees based on this ordinance recommendation. So some of the development impacts of this is obviously the additional cost associated with adding or replacing trees. From the development community, we've heard the average cost of a two-and-a-half inch caliber tree is roughly $250. So to require three new. So to require three new trees to be planted on a single family lot, you're adding roughly $750 of a cost to that particular lot.
That was going to be one of my.
Go ahead. You're probably asking the same question.
Well, my thing is, are we going to require a certain size tree? Because you can plant a dogwood. I mean, and it gets big. I mean, I, I had one that was over 30 years old and Florence took it out. But, and I continued to grow. I have three in my backyard that I'm growing now. So are we requiring a certain size? Because I don't pay anything for my trees when I plant them.
Right. So there is a size requirement and that is in our planting list that is already established. So we don't intend to change that in any way. But it's basically a two inch caliber tree at four foot off the ground is where that two inch must be measured.
And that answered my question, that two inch caliber.
Two inch caliber at four feet off the ground.
I have, I have one in that same vein. When we say trees, and you say three trees per residential property, excuse me, that also includes understory trees. So I could put one pine tree, two hollies.
And a crepe myrtle.
And, okay. Where do native trees come in? Does it matter?
So as far as existing trees on the site?
I mean, a long leaf pine is about as native as it gets to Brunswick County.
Yep.
So could they plant or a shrub oak, you know? Do trees native to Brunswick County? Is there any requirement at all if that's what should be placed there?
So one of the text amendments that I'll get to in a little bit is amending our planting list that will include adding native species that thrive in our community. And so that planting list is established in the U D O. So the development would, developer would have to choose from those available plant species in order to plant and meet this minimum requirement.
One addendum to that. Is there a requirement, and I'm sure we'll get to it, that they have to leave a tree that's already on that property?
No, there is no requirement.
Plant three.
Yeah, they can, they can, they're still able to come in and completely cut the site, construct a home. They would have to plant new plantings that meet the minimum caliber requirement based on the planting list in order to achieve.
So for the benefit of the citizens that have been screaming about a tree ordinance, they could still clear cut a lot completely to have a thousand acres. They could still clear cut. Okay, and then plant what they choose to plant as long as there's three trees of some sort, under tree, regular tree, whatever the case may be.
Correct. So if the developer chooses to intentionally preserve trees that are existing on the site, those count towards the minimum tree requirement. So if you do have a lot and you save a tree, one tree gets saved on that site, you only have to plant two. Maybe you're able to save three trees on that site, then you don't have to plant any.
My concern with that is if you buy a thousand acre tract, you would have to pre-plant that entire thousand acres in order to save a couple of trees on it. You couldn't just leave trees here and there because you don't know yet where, where the houses are going to be. It's, it's got to be planted first.
Yeah, stormwater often dictates the, you know, and we get into this conversation a lot. Clearcutting is something that is sometimes unavoidable based on the site conditions. And so we understand that and we respect that from a, a planning standpoint. And we're just trying to overcome the instances where development happens when no trees are replanted back on that particular site.
Okay, I'll follow. All right, help me out with something that just, that was just brought up. So currently today on that thousand acre lot, we are requiring that they go out and identify all these heritage trees. And then they can come and clear cut them after we have them identified. But once our new ordinance, once the legislature comes back into session and they send back our, our ordinance, then we do have the opportunity to protect those heritage trees that we were talking, that we've just mentioned that we could go out and clear cut. If we choose to.
If we choose to, under the state guided authority to establish a tree ordinance, yes.
Right.
And obviously that's not what we're discussing.
I, I realize that, but down the road, whenever we get putting all this back together, once it's all jumbled up and it comes back together, then what we're asking for from the state is just the example that was given. We're already requiring that they go out and identify these heritage trees. And then we're saying, okay, now that you've spent the engineering funds to go out and identify them, now you can cut them down. So we're looking at maybe fixing that, I guess, is what I'm seeing out of it. That's just my opinion.
If we are granted that authority by the state, that is something that we could look to adopt as well.
Okay. Please continue.
Yep. So one thing that got brought up a lot from both the residents and the development community is how would we enforce or mitigate this after development is complete? So after that home receives a C O and is sold, the county has no intentions to enforce or mitigate these after the fact. We expect that most property owners who purchase a home that has trees planted in it are likely to just continue allowing those trees to grow. If that property owner decides that they didn't like the location of where that crepe myrtle was planted or the pine tree in the backyard, we would not prohibit them from going in and removing those after the fact. That was a concern of the development community related to property rights. Another thing that the development community was concerned with is how we are going to inspect this new requirement of having three trees per lot. And so we've talked with our code administration staff. And what will happen is at the very end of a final C O inspection, or final inspection that's done before a C O is issued, is there'll be a checkbox on that inspection form where that inspector looks to see and make sure that there are at least three trees on the site. Again, they're not going to go out there with a tape measure and, you know, disqualify you if the caliber of the tree is 1.75 inches instead of two inches. They're really there to confirm that the intent was achieved by ensuring that there are three trees on that particular site when it's done. So our code administration staff do not feel like it will add any additional time or pressure to the development or to the inspectors in the field. It should be a very simple glance. It's something that you should be able to confirm within a minute of being on the site. So it's not going to cause any particular delays related to inspections or receiving C Os. Now, in the event that that property does not have the correct planting, yes, that C O could be held, withheld until the necessary plantings are installed. Again, we're open to feedback to you guys. If you feel like three trees per single family lot is too much, not enough, et cetera. That is, that is something that can be adjusted up or down. Three felt like a, a good number from planning staff's perspective and something that you would see in, in other jurisdictions. Again, most developers, most builders are already meeting this requirement. This is intended to go towards the developers that are not planting anything when they are done. Any questions or feedback or directive on those? And this is specifically the language that would be amended within the U D O. And I'm not going to read that, but underline there is the new requirement that we would establish. The 15 trees per acre on the non-residential use, that is also something that was mirrored from New Hanover County. So again, something that is done in a neighboring jurisdiction. All right, text amendment number two. Amending the heritage tree definition. So this simply is to better define what qualifies as a heritage tree related to species type, diameter, et cetera. We currently have a heritage tree definition. And as Chairman Thompson just outlined, we do require developers to go out and survey and identify where heritage trees are located on the property. But we do not have any enforcement or any other mechanism other than to receive that feedback back from them. And note that in the application, and then they are able to move forward and remove those if they deem necessary. So again, let's see, it looks like we've got a little confusion there on the bottom of the recommendation. But this is, this is really simple. It's just a, an amendment and edit to the already existing heritage tree definition that we have in the U D O. And what you see in yellow there is the amended language. Any questions or comments on amending the heritage tree definition, text amendment number two?
The thing that I've noticed is that some of these trees grow pretty rapidly. I mean, I have hollies in my backyard and I think. Fortate, well, they were almost like three months. So eight inches is not a, a great challenge. I mean, it's not like a heritage, heritage in my mind is one that has been there for generations. As you go into different places around the county, you will even see historical markers for some trees such as down in Gulfport, there's not a beach. That tree that is there is about 400 years old. And so I would submit that that is a heritage tree in fact that it has a heritage that goes back for many, you know, generations and decades. But a holly doesn't fit that perspective, even though they're nice and I have them in my yard. I've even had to cut them down because I've had issues with them, but they, they fell over and everything. But the other side of it is a dogwood, yes, state tree, but they grow pretty rapidly as well. I don't know anything about red bud. I didn't know about oaks and that sort of thing. So point being is, I think heritage trees was on the chicken, not pretty much within your lifetime. In city, whereas in the case of most of these, they.
So one of the things that I'll say is, is this where it gets a little confusing. We do not have a heritage tree protection ordinance because we haven't been granted that statutory authority by the state yet. So, and, and who knows whether we even will at any point in time. What this does is this is actually a, a positive for the development community. Because when we outline and better define what a heritage tree is, when we get to some of the other text amendments later, you'll see incentives and credits that they get for keeping a heritage tree. So by lowering the definition of a heritage tree and making it eight inch instead of 12 inch or four inch instead of six inch, those allow more trees to be classified as a, as a heritage tree. So when they go to retain them, they can receive better incentives and better credits associated with maintaining those. If we were to increase these, you know, trunk calibers, then it would make it harder for them to achieve some of those credit and one for one trade offs that we, that we have in some of the other text amendments. So this is actually, could be a benefit to the development community.
I just think back to my own experience when we bought our house and there were a lot of trees in our backyard. About a week and a half later, we spent a bunch of money to get rid of about a half of them just because they, they, I think, were planted with the canopy at this tall and they got so big, they ate, ate up our backyard and made a mess every, all over the place. So it's, I mean, it's, I just, I'm thinking through both sides of this. As far as the individual homeowner, and I'd hate to see, you know, people spend a bunch of money to put in trees that the homeowner takes right back out.
See, I'm just the opposite. I live on two acres of land as God made it. And the only thing that was ever cleared was the footprint of my house in my drive. I have thousands of long leaf pine trees, couple of shrub oaks and one oak tree. I don't know. The only, I have, the only reason I have a lawnmower is for the right of way. I have, I don't have a blade of grass on my property. It's all just natural.
We left, we just cut out the ones that were paying.
Again, this is just establishing the death, better clarifying the definition of a heritage tree. We don't do anything with heritage trees right now, other than if any of these other future proposed text amendments are adopted, we do provide credits and incentives towards how those are counted. Right now, this really doesn't mean a whole lot for, for folks. All right, text amendment number three. To amend open space and recreation area requirements. The intent of this text amendment is to increase the amount of land outside of the floodplain and wetlands that remain undeveloped or impacted to provide additional protection to tree scape, increase tree canopy coverage and improve wildlife habitat. We've also created incentives for developers to utilize exceptional design options and other public benefits that help them offset some of these open space and recreational area requirements. So if you guys go back to the February, the slide earlier where I showed some of the recommendations that were presented in February, one of those was to reduce the amount of open space that can be calculated in floodplains and wetlands. That was something that when we talked to the development community, they were against, they, they had significant opposition to that. And so what staff went back to the table and tried to do was, okay, well, how can we come about this at another, in another way? If we're not going to offset or change how they calculate open space, we need to preserve that in a, in another manner. And this is the recommendation that we've come up with. So the current ordinance allows a minimum open space or requires a minimum open space by zoning district ranging from 3% to 30%. So again, based on the zoning district, you're going to have a wide variation of open space requirements for that new development. Of the open space, regardless of what zoning district you're in, at least 15% of that area must be in the form of recreation area. So we have two different definitions there of open space. We have traditional open space, which can, which can again be floodplain, wetlands, undevelopable areas. It can be right of ways. It can be all sorts of different types of land use within that development. Recreation area, however, is specifically defined. And that's typically your more usable acreage of a development site. So that's where your amenity centers are going to be, your playgrounds, your pocket parks, your trails, your tennis courts, your pools, those things, those are going to typically be in your recreation area. So we do require open space and we do require recreation area. What we are looking to do in this recommended text amendment is to increase both of those. So the increase on the open space is by 5% across all zoning districts. So that increases the range from 3% to 8% on a minimum and 30% to 35% on the maximum. So 5% increase across the board towards all of those. And again, the intent is to just try to protect and preserve some of the existing natural habitat that we have in Brunswick County. On the recreational side, the proposal is to increase from 15% of that open space area to 25% of that open space area. So doing a 10% increase, again, across the board, across all zoning districts to again, protect more of the developable area that's outside of the floodplains and wetlands. And again, this is a sort of a, a way that we can go about doing that without playing with the percentages of allowing development to count floodplain and wetlands as part of their open space requirements.
And for my clarification, I'm going to stick with the thousand acre development, just a good round number to work. Currently, 15% is supposed to be open space or recreation. You want to increase it to 25%. So 250 acres has to be for recreation.
Yeah. The Mark Renterer says 25% of the open space.
Oh, okay. Of just the open, but guys, okay, big difference. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but let's use some of the, let's use the maximum. Let's take your thousand lot, thousand acre plot. Let's say it requires 30% of open space. So that is 300 acres of that site is going to have to be maintained for open space. Of that 300 acres, 25% of that is going to have to be maintained for recreational area. So what's 25% of 300?
Seventy-five.
There you go.
So.
Seventy-five acres. So 75 acres is really not all that much when you consider a 1,000 acre tract. Do what?
Heck, it isn't.
When you consider amenity centers, bike trails, open, other open space. So recreational space can be trails that are within the community.
Seventy-five acres is a lot of land. That's a lot of land. That's, so a pool, a community center, a hiking trail, hiking trails is what? Seventy-five acres is a lot of land. I mean, let's be, let's be fair, based on our ordinance, that's what, 200 homes? Is that right? Seventy-five acres could be 200 homes.
It could be more than that.
Easily. So I, I mean, that's, it's pretty ominous. On a thousand acres, you gotta have 75 acres of rec space. How much, how, how big is the average park? How much? How big is the average park? Three acres, four acres?
So one of the things that
Community.
Yeah, one of the things that we've found is most development proposals meet or exceed the recreational area and open space area requirements that the current ordinance hasn't. So we're we're not, again, you want to
Yeah. So in a planned development, you're allowed to cluster. So you get the growth density. So I'm going to use easy numbers.
Okay.
Okay. So let's say you can have two homes per acre and it's a hundred acres. They can have two hundred homes.
Okay.
So even if three hundred and thirty acres have to come out into open space, you can still have those two hundred homes and you cluster into the the seventy acre there left. So you you don't lose any density that way. You still get the maximum density. And instead of, and so you end up with smaller lots, you might end up with some townhomes, but you've got to give because give places for people to go because they're smaller lots. So instead of having a really big backyard, you have open space to move instead of having a really large backyard. But it allows you, because we use growth density, to have that growth density. So you're not going to lose any home. So if that whole hundred acres allows two units per acre, which is really low, actually, more like four units per acre, then you're going to get that full density for it. Again, some of them might be on small lots, some of them might be townhomes, some of them might be a standard. Gives places for people to go and walk their dogs and it it actually doesn't take up as it takes up more space. Amanity site can easily be taken away. It's easy.
You know, just maybe to help us down the road because I'm assuming that wherever we're headed, we're probably headed towards a public hearing on all of this eventually down the road. Having some kind of drawing or design of and you can use the thousand acres.
Yeah.
So that we can, yeah, have a visual visually. The thing that I would like to actually know is out of all the current developments that we have, some of the plantations, where do they fit into all of this? How much recreation area percentage wise do they have? You know, in other in other words, give me a give me an ocean ridge and tell me what their
Go over all the space requirement easily. Some of them significantly over and most of them go over our recreation space or most of them are already providing.
I mean, we are, we all want. I mean, the goal here is to have a nice developments within within Brunswick County. So, you know, kind of share with us, I guess, what we currently have today and how some of those developments, how they fit into all this, you know, did they use, you know, again, using Ocean Ridge for an example? Are they, do they have twenty five percent?
They got all those golf courses. So
Well, and and is is that part of, you know?
Well, Ocean Ridge just bought a thirty acre site, right, to increase their amenities because they didn't have enough room on there. I believe. And I think it's thirty acres on that lawn. It's around.
See, I'm I'm thinking now the golf course subdivisions obviously meet this requirement. No, no worries. Okay. But I'm thinking like, okay, right up the street, I just thought of it, right up the street here. This New Deal Horton thing. What's it called? Something Creek?
Middle Creek.
Eagle Creek. They have zero amenities because a friend of mine went in there to look for a home. There was zero amenities that come with that. There's no pool, there's no clubhouse, there's nothing. It's just homes. How would they need?
They they have to have open space. Eagle Creek, the one way down, not directly adjacent, right?
It's not a mile up from here. Not even.
Okay. So the the middle creek, they definitely have open space.
Middle Creek does. I've I've driven through that.
Creek is a very old subdivision. I had to look it up, but it's it was
Brand new.
It was revamped. It should start in construction, but it was approved in early two thousand.
Oh, okay.
So it was still under a much more leases. But I would imagine that there is some, maybe they hasn't employed the belt yet, or maybe they didn't.
Oh, I actually, a a good friend of mine went in there to look at a home because he saw one of the models that he kind of liked. And in talking to him, he said, what amenities are coming with this neighborhood? Will there be a pool or clubhouse?
Remember that amenities, not open space. So they should at minimum have places for people to go walk, that type of thing. They should.
But you know, drive through.
Again, the the example, the certainly the the charts and displays will will help us as we move forward with this with the public. But helping us out would be to use something that exists today that we can either go ride through or take a look at and say, okay, I see I see where you're saying that this is this development is fifteen percent and this development's twenty five percent and we could actually see the difference. I don't know how difficult that would be for y'all to do, going back and looking at some of these developments, but you know, I guess what we're looking for is to make sure that we're making the right steps forward. And seeing seeing is believing.
It's hard for me to imagine a one size fits all ordinance. Now, a golf course community clearly meets all the open space and recreational space necessary. But there's a lot of subdivisions that don't have golf courses. And if you're saying that twenty five percent of the thirty to thirty five percent of open space has to be recreation, that could be beyond notice to to accomplish.
Seventy. So seventy five, let's go back to the scenario of the one thousand acre trap. Seventy five acres of that must be recreation area only. So at a thousand acres at two point six units per acre, you're talking about twenty six hundred homes being able to be applied there. So that's at two point one people per household. You're six thousand, you're going to have six thousand residents within that community. That's larger than most municipalities within Brunswick County. So when you think about seventy five acres being applied towards protected recreation area, that could be an open field, multipurpose field, that could be an amenity center, that could be walking trails, that could be tennis courts, basketball courts, dog parks, you name it. That seventy five acres across six thousand people is from a planning's perspective, it's probably not even sufficient. And I think you can look at plan developments that have happened in Brunswick County that have probably regretted not having increased areas for recreation. So I live in a community where the public, our our residents are demanding that we find new amenity areas. So but and of course, it was under a different ordinance, but that I think you're speaking to the fact that the public is requesting those additional areas. But I'll I'll also go back to the whole intent of this. The whole intent is to not take away the percentage of floodplains and wetlands that development can use in their overall calculations. So we're not going down that road. We're trying to, you know, get to the same outcome in a different way. Is twenty five percent the right number? That's what we all get to figure out. Should that be reduced down to twenty percent? These are all things that we are open for, having conversations about and how that can benefit the community in the long run. But I will say, one of the things I haven't even gotten to yet is incentives. So our proposal is going to offer incentives to the development community that can reduce that amount of recreation area that is required of them by doing certain things that could be beneficial to the either the public or providing exceptional design in their site plan. And so I'll try to get to those and we can begin to see how, okay, we're raising the bar on the required recreation area. But here are some outcomes that the developer can choose to reduce that recreation area down, giving them more ability to construct homes. But as Kirsty said, our density is gross. So they not very many of our developments come through and meet our even come close to our density thresholds that are allowed in our zoning districts because it's gross area. Most of them are two, two and a half, two point six, two point eight, and that's just really, that's medium density at best in a lot of our zoning districts. So meanwhile, kind of touch base a little bit on the incentives in in just a moment.
I have a question on this one while we're here. Forte talked about the thousand acre development. How about the guy that's got four or five acres land and is going to develop eight or ten houses on it?
Won't apply to them.
Doesn't apply to them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got another. I got a question. How much of the wetlands is gonna be used for the open space? Because I don't I don't think we should be using wetlands for open space.
So right now, our current ordinance allows developers to use eighty five to a hundred percent of wetlands and floodplains to be counted towards open space requirement.
Eighty five to what?
Eighty five to one hundred percent.
Yeah. Are we going to be changing that?
No, that is, we are coming at it in a different approach to to not affect those calculations. So when it comes to true open space, they'll still be able to use eighty five to a hundred percent of floodplains and wetlands to achieve that. But again, going back to the recreational area, recreational area is typically high and dry lands, developable land. So by increasing that percentage, you are saving more and preserving more of the areas outside of the floodplains and wetlands.
Uh, well, let's say that this board doesn't agree to these changes, then we might need to consider changing the wetland as open space, the percentages.
That is a that is an option that a lot of jurisdictions choose to pursue. We just didn't in this case, based on the feedback we got from the development community.
Okay.
So again, and just that last bullet point there, the development communities express concerns over reducing the amount of developable land. Again, when you increase the recreation area, you take away that high and dry area. And there are concerns that there could be additional housing costs and development costs associated with that. So this is specifically what the text amendment looks like. Again, this is only for conventional and and planned development. So you can see those changes across the board highlighted in yellow, the five percent increase in open space. And then in the bottom box there, the increase from fifteen percent to twenty five percent for open space. And I'll get to incentives in just a little bit. Any other questions or comments on that? All right. Text amendment number four is open space distribution and tree requirements within that open space. So again, focusing on the open space areas, focusing on overcoming the challenges that we see related to clear cutting. And so when, you know, every development is required to provide at least, you know, a certain percentage of their development site for open space. But what we are seeing is the development community not coming back and planting or replanting trees in those open space areas. So you end up with barren, unlandscaped areas. Again, most developers don't necessarily have this problem, but we can point to certain developments that have occurred where you you basically clear cut a site and the open space is a grass field or an unlaid landscaped area of the community. So the intent behind this is to ensure that open space is not only distributed evenly throughout a site or not evenly necessarily, but distributed throughout a site and not solely confined to one area. But it also requires and establishes tree scape standards for those open space areas. So we can again, make sure that they are landscaped. So the current ordinance requires no, there's no requirement for open space to be distributed throughout a property. And there's no minimum tree scape or landscape requirement within those open space areas. So our recommendation is to discourage open space in one area of the site. But I need to emphasize this because this was a point from the development community is it does not prohibit you from concentrating the open space in one area and it doesn't prohibit amenity sites from being, you know, making up a core portion of that open space. We understand if you're building a large development, you may have one main amenity center in the center of that property, or maybe it's on the front or rear of that property, depending on the site layout. But and we understand that and and we're not going to prohibit that, that those large amenity centers are going to be promoted and 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 be allowable under this recommendation. What we are trying to accomplish is that we often see in poorly designed site plans, the open space fully concentrated in one area. And it's just easy. It's just like, okay, let's just put the open space over here and there's not much thought or intention behind it. And that open space is often not usable. It's stacked behind houses. It's just not easily accessible by the members and residents that will live in that community. So we're trying to get the development community to be more intentional about where they locate this open space and distribute it more evenly and accessible across the property. But again, that doesn't necessarily preclude them from concentrating it in one area.
Now, I got another one.
Okay.
Just doing done. We're going to go back to that thousand acre. Seventy five acres has to be recreation. They we've established that. That's a whole lot of recreation, which now falls under the jurisdiction of an HOA. Not a fan of HOAs. I would never live in an HOA personally. Okay. But now you have an HOA that's quite large. And you're, we all know HOA dues go up every year, every other year. They're constantly going up. Most people have a fixed mortgage, so that's set. Okay, your your mortgage is fifteen hundred bucks a month. That's going to stay the same for thirty years. But your HOA dues get out of control in many cases. Now they have all of this recreational space that has to be maintained, including roads and everything else by an HOA. We are going to run HOA of HOA dues up beyond people's mortgage rate. And that's a concern to me. Everybody lives within a budget. And there's no controlling HOA fees. That becomes a problem for the average homeowner. You know, somebody like you, a young family with two young boys, that could that could slam you. Five years after you move in, HOA, well, we we got to maintain this pool, this community center, this, that, the other parks, you what guys want ball fields, this, this, that. We all know the maintenance that goes on with all of this stuff. That becomes a problem in my opinion.
Yeah, it's certainly something that you have to consider when you think about housing affordability.
Yeah.
Some of these requirements for open space and recreation area, some of these, you know, additional recommendations related to landscaping and tree scape. Absolutely, there's a housing affordability impact to that. And we'll we'll walk through every one of those, every one of these proposals is different and affects that in a different way. Some of it is negligible, some of it could be significant and it's all site specific, right? So it is absolutely something that we are concerned about. But we also haven't seen very many developments recently that are related to affordable housing. And so we haven't found a situation yet that it's been impactful enough to prohibit affordable housing. Because nobody's bringing affordable housing products to market right now. It's just, that's not where the money is at.
I get it.
Um, so but it's absolutely a concern and something that we have to pay attention to.
Things think about is you're similar, but I mean, I I'm just saying, an individual who has the ability to come in and buy something, they're a lot of times dictated by price and location. And the thing is, if they have extra things like recreation area, which I'm not against it, but the thing about is, and sometimes it's all they can do, afford to pay a house payment, much less to rent. And Commissioner Forte is right. The HOAs just keep on going up on them. I mean, my wife worked for a HOA management company. I mean, and my family, my in-laws have a condominium. We see this and that's the cost. It it increases. But the problem is, if you're a young family and you're you're each making, say, twenty five to forty thousand a piece and you're turning around, you've got a fifteen hundred dollar house payment and an electric bill and everything else like that, then they've got the recreational area they got to do. And they don't have a choice. They got to go in their head. Because the thing is, the way it was, that recreational area had to be there. And now they got to pay for it regardless of what they want it or not. Whereas in some cases, they would shop and said, you know what, I just want a roof over my head that I own.
Yeah.
But that's, I see that reality because my son and my my daughter and son-in-law had to struggle for two years to find a place to live. They lived with us. And finding a place that's affordable is tough. And I'm not negating and saying, well, I don't care about it. That's not the point. The point is they can't afford it. So where do you go where an individual is not making a lot of money comparatively? Because there's some people that make six figures and it's not a big deal with them, but there's other people, they're struggling. They're working three or four jobs and trying to make ends meet. They're cleaning on the weekends. They're doing, they're nannying. They're doing everything they can to try to make it. And here it is. I got a recreational that I got to pay for and I got to pay for the HOA dues for it on top of that. And I really didn't want it. Now it makes the affordability completely go down. Whereas I can also get on the street and I can find another place that does have recreational areas that I want. So here it is. The individual has that choice. I I don't think it should be us that mandates that they have to have it. But this is what the consumer, consumer is the one that makes that ultimate decision as to where they want to live.
Yes. And again, we'll get to some incentives that are available to folks.
That's my point, though, before we go into incentives. I'm just saying that is a reality like yours. We're talking about without getting it encumbered with other things.
Recreation areas do not have to necessarily include amenity centers, pools. Most frequently, they do. But recreation area could be a multipurpose field.
It could be a sidewalk.
Maintenance to that or or walking trails or things like that. So and we do have developments that come through that do not have amenity centers and they meet the current fifteen percent recreation area requirement. So those are going to be your more affordable. So those are going to be your more affordable uh developments for sure. Um, but again, that, to your point, you bring up very valid points that we have to try to balance. But we've not seen someone bring an affordable housing product to market yet. No one has approached Brunswick County Planning Department with looking at something and say, hey, I wanna bring affordable housing, but your recreation area is a detriment to me being able to do that. We just, a- again, it's, the market's not there in terms of where the money is at. Uh, so we just have not seen that unfortunately.
That's.
Commissioner Williams and then Commissioner.
So I think there's a difference in affordable housing and housing affordability. I mean, affordable housing is where you bring in a development that's designed for that. Housing affordability is doing things that inadvertently drive the price up where the average person cannot afford to buy a house. And I go back to twenty seventeen when my wife and I bought our house and we looked in numerous neighborhoods and they were, you know, if, interestingly, I had not thought about that until I was sitting here today. The neighborhoods with all the, the nice amenities were out of my price range. And the one that I live in has two pools, you know, very small pools and sidewalks, and that is it. The only other recreational area is trying to dodge the allocators at the retention pod. But um really, it was, you know, there, there were several, they were just flat out, out of my price range and they had a lot of things going on in them. And I also didn't want to be around that much activity. I wanted a quiet neighborhood without a ton going on. So it gave me a choice. So that's just something to, to go back to what Commissioner Cook said about the choice, you know? And then another thing is in every two hundred and fifty acre tract is different from every other two hundred and fifty acre tract. So one side is not gonna fit all implemented.
Yep. Yeah, so again, going back to the recommendation is um to discourage open space being concentrated in one area. Again, it's not gonna prohibit it, but it is going to discourage it and make it more accessible to the uh members of that community. It will require at least fifty canopy or understory trees per acre within the open space area if planting new trees or twenty-five trees per acre if preserving existing mature trees. Um, open space areas that contain amenities, stormwater infrastructure, utilities, easements, or other similar facilities are exempt from the planning requirements. So again, that was something that we understood, you're not gonna be able to plant that number of trees uh in those particular areas.
I do wanna say something before you go on. I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm trying to get it in. Um, just because um you have this recreation doesn't mean that they have to do a full recreation. But the other thing is, the developer, uh, it depends on how many acres he's developing. It could be a small area. Uh, it might not require HOA. I live in a development. We don't have a HOA. We also, a developer could, could come in and just sell lots and somebody else build the house. So uh to me, we still need that open space for whatever to keep it from losing every uh attractive tree or site to make it more um accustomed to the area.
Yeah, you're exactly right. So again, going back to the intent, the intent is just to save more area outside of the flood plains and wetlands. All right, so for some of the development impacts for something like this, obviously the additional cost for planting the trees, uh, especially if that land is cleared or was uh unplanted or used as agriculture. When you have to go back and make those tree plantings, you're gonna have um exponentially more impact to those than a site that was uh previously tree prior to the development taking place. So everything, the impact's gonna be site specific, um, based on the current um trees that are on that site. So in uh input from the development community is uh they'd like to see additional language that outlines open space versus recreation space. Um, we can flush that out with them. We're open to any and all suggestions that can clarify what is open space uh and what is not. And speaking of, so here's the actual text um that we are presenting uh as part of text amendment number four. Uh, again, very simple, kind of uh simply defines what I've already discussed. There's no other conversations there, dive a little bit deeper and start to peel that onion back a little bit more related to recreation area standards. Uh, so again, this is something we currently require, uh, but the recreation area, we hope uh to better define that area, increase the amount of area that is uh required of each development. Uh, and by increasing that area, we uh preserve land and tree scape outside of the flood plains and wetlands. That's what it boils down to. That's what I've emphasized uh multiple times. So again, we also create voluntary incentives, so they're not mandatory for the development community to use. Uh, but we have offered those to either receive exceptional design or public benefit. And then that decreases the amount of area that they uh have to provide for a, a development. So again, current ordinance requires fifteen percent. We don't have any incentives currently under our uh U D O. The recommendation is to increase that area to twenty-five percent and establish uh incentives as well as some modifications to the recreational uses. As things change and um society moves forward with new initiatives and new recreational ideas, we've amended and updated our list to uh accommodate that. So again, same points as earlier, increased recreational area means uh more developable land is devoted to active and passive recreation, which reduces acreage for housing. As Kirsty pointed out earlier, that could potentially be overcome by density throughout the development. Um, but there is a potential based on site specific conditions of that um plot that uh maybe it does reduce the number of units that they are um able to accommodate. So I say may and could a lot because uh and you'll see that throughout this presentation is because everything is so site specific and site dependent that the developer can make changes to density and location and other factors um that there aren't necessarily those negative impacts um based on these uh amendments. Any questions there before I kind of dive in a little bit deeper? All right, so I've got a two pager on this one to kind of break through the exact uh text amendments. This one is uh amending the definition to the recreation area. So again, moving it from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent, we add additional um areas and uses that can be counted towards recreation area. Uh, dog parks, upland and highlands uh comprised of grasslands and forests and field, passive and active recreation. So that goes back to Commissioner Sykes' uh statement and one, and hopefully addresses some of the concerns related to the cost that this increase may have on HOAs. The land doesn't have to be developed. It doesn't have to be an amenity center or a pool or a basketball court. It can be uplands and highlands and grasslands and forests and fields that are passive. And those can count towards that recreation area. Again, our intent is just to save more land outside of the uh wetlands and flood plains. So not intended to put any financial impact on the HOA associated with that community. Uh, now, these are the specific incentives that have been outlined for the development. Sorry, they're all highlighted, but we highlighted everything that is new. Uh, so we established the list of incentives, A B, A through F there. Uh, I'll start and just kind of work down through each one of them. If you have any questions, let me know. A says to reduce, uh, a reduction for increasing the capacity of stormwater facilities. So you would have a ten percent reduction for constructing stormwater storage to the one hundred year storm. And you would have a twenty-five percent reduction for constructing all stormwater facilities to the one hundred year storm event. So we know stormwater is a problem. We've made stormwater amendments to our ordinance. Those have been very positive and impactful for us. This is a, an opportunity, and actually honestly, I'll give the development community a lot of credit. Most of them are um designing to the one hundred year storm event now, um, especially in uh the major corridors that our planning staff has identified for them to make that focus on. So that's a positive from them. So this is an opportunity for them to get credit for something that they are in most cases doing already. The next one, B, is to reduce a, a reduction of twenty percent for incorporating a collector's street dedicated to N C D O T for public use. So this is a big one because transportation and traffic is a, a big concern of the community. And so getting a development community to, or developer to come in and help assist offset those pressures on the major thoroughfares that are already in place by establishing a new collector's street. We feel like that brings a whole lot of uh positive public impact. And so we wanna give them a reduction uh for that. We've seen success from the planning staff making this request voluntarily of new development. And we have specific examples where the development community has embraced that and implemented that. And it's been a big part of why those uh developments were approved as they went through the planning uh process. But this gives them credit on the recreation area by doing something that could benefit uh transportation and traffic congestion.
Is N C D O T required to take those roads?
Uh, so in if they're designed to N C D O T standards and N C D O T is at the table with us, if we are C and through the process, if we ever run into a situation where they weren't, we would certainly try to figure out the whys behind that. But in most cases, N C D O T will accept those roads that are designed to their standard. Especially if it's a collector's street. If they're internal streets to a neighborhood, N C D O T is, is maybe a little bit more reluctant to accept those. But as a collector's street where you're not gonna have any driveways on that collector's street, um, N C D O T is much more favorable to those types of uh development. All right, next one is a reduction by making public land donation uh at the following rates. So public land donation is land that would be donated to Brunswick County or any other government entity for purposes of providing public good. So you can think of parks, fire stations, EMS stations, school sites, et cetera. Um, so based on the amount of acreage that would be dedicated to uh the public use, they would receive a um, a certain reduction in their recreation requirement as a result of that. D is to a reduction of fifty percent in planned developments in exchange for long-term affordability with ten percent of the overall units within that development being uh deed restricted affordable housing uh for earners that uh earn below eighty percent of the HUD median income for that area. So again, trying to accomplish public good, trying to address uh a need within Brunswick County related to affordable housing, providing a significant reduction uh in recreation area to the development uh for in turn, basically providing something that um is, is only affecting ten percent of their overall development in terms of affordable housing. E is a reduction of forty percent for providing lots equal to or greater than twenty thousand square feet with twenty percent of the overall unit. So that doesn't mean that the entire development has to have lot sizes above twenty thousand square feet, but that twenty percent of the development does. And just for reference, twenty thousand square feet is point four or five acres, so just under a half acre size lot. This is intended to meet some of the feedback that we've received from the public related to cluster and small lot development that we see uh most frequently in our new development. And so offering a, a housing product out there um that has a larger lot for, and again, that doesn't apply to everyone. Not everyone wants or can afford a large lot development. But from the development community's perspective, they say that they can't afford to build large lot developments. It doesn't make sense for them financially. So offering them an incentive to do that in terms of a, a reduction in the recreation area hopefully will entice more to do that. We don't see this being a big, you know, factor for them. Uh, but if a, a developer is potentially looking at doing a larger lot subdivision, this would provide them uh an additional incentive. And then last is a reduction of ten percent uh for any exceptional design element such as uh green building, dedication of a conservation easement, providing a buffer of thirty feet or larger away from wetlands, low-impact development and traditional neighborhood design. So.
What's traditional neighborhood design?
Official neighborhood design in the scouts where you can, you can actually access your lot and you actually park in the rear of your property and you do not have a lot forward.
Oh, way old school.
Very nice.
Gotcha.
So with these incentives, a developer is able to reduce at max, depending on what the one they use. They could use one, they could use multiple, they could use all. Um, but a maximum of sixty percent in the reduction of the recreation area uh is allowed based on using the incentive. So theoretically, uh, if a developer used some of these incentives, they could actually reduce the amount of recreation area they have under what is required in our current U D O. The trade-off to that is that we are receiving public benefit and a, and a more enhanced and more a, a higher quality uh site plan design as a result. Any questions on this? All right, number five, almost halfway, a little bit more than halfway through. Number six. Yeah, we got nine of them, so we, we got three more to get up.
I had a lot of questions.
All right, number six is to amend the collector and thoroughfare street buffers. Uh, so the intent behind this is to increase replanning requirements for non-residential development, non-residential only, so this does not apply to residential development along collector's streets and thoroughfares to improve aesthetics, encourage the preservation of existing trees, reestablish tree scape that may have been clear cut and reduce light pollution. So our current ordinance does require certain uh canopy or understory trees per linear feet. You can see there, we require one canopy tree per linear foot or two understory trees per linear foot of property frontage for commercial. Our recommendation is to double those numbers. So going from one canopy tree to two and going from two understory trees to four. So saying double often is like, whoa, that's a lot. But when you only have one to begin with, doubling is about the only direction that you can go. Um, so again, the intent is to um increase that tree scape. Uh, we can point to numerous developments that have taken place along these thoroughfares where there's very minimal landscape in front of it. We can also point to where uh voluntarily development has chosen to say, you know what? We're going to add increased landscaping requirements over what the U D O uh minimum is. And, and you can just tell a visual difference in the site designs and, and impacts of those commercial developments when they're done. So the impact from the developer, the uh input from the development community is, is pretty obvious, right? So it's gonna have an increased cost in those planes uh on those property frontage. Again, it's going to be minimum when you consider the cost of a tree. Um, and you know, you may have a five hundred foot, you know, property boundary that abuts highway seventeen. And so at, at worst, it may require you to add, uh, you know, about eight or ten new trees. So when you think about the commercial development expenses, having a, a fifteen hundred dollar, twenty-five hundred dollar additional expense related to uh landscaping is, is pretty insignificant in the grand scheme of things. But no doubt, still an impact. Any questions on adding?
Spread back to our uses, like somebody did more than a hundred feet of road frontage.
Would not apply. And here specifically the text amendment that uh is proposed. The text highlighted in yellow is the new text. Another thing here that I didn't necessarily mention is retention of a heritage tree. A retention of existing trees can go to count as one for one. Heritage trees can count two for one on meeting that buffer requirement. So again, going back to the heritage tree definition, by establishing more clearly what that definition is, development may be able to use that to their benefit in meeting the buffer requirements that we have established here. All right, next, number seven.
Going back to the prior page, um, can you define understory tree? I, I'd never heard that term before the past few days.
Yep, so we have a planting list that's already defined in our U D O where we have bushes, shrubs, understory and canopy trees uh defined in terms of what species count for which ones of those. I don't have that list with me, but I can share it with you so you have a, a better understanding of what species count towards what.
Wild, there, there, those are the canopy trees about like, um, great myrtles and dogwoods would be understory trees. They're much shorter. You would think that uh canopy trees are probably don't get up to forty feet, thirty feet. But a understory tree is not gonna get more than thirty. They can go under um lot, um, water lines. They would not enter here.
So hypothetically, if this were adopted, somebody could choose two canopy trees or four understory tree or understory trees. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's not a requirement for both. It's a one or the other.
And I had somebody mention street trees to me and all these different terms have di- different definitions. What is the definition of a street tree and how does it fit into this picture?
Yeah, so street trees is actually something that staff looked at as a potential uh text amendment requirement. Um, it was something that uh we, when we, let me first go back to the definition. A street tree is typically planted between the edge of the uh pavement and your, say, uh sidewalk. So in that planting strip area, I say between sidewalk and, and street, but not all of our developments are required to have sidewalks. So it's, it's typically a tree that's in the right of way, right off of the roadway. Um, when we were flushing that out with our staff, our utility staff had grave concerns over um making street trees a requirement because that's typically where our water and sewer infrastructure goes. So when it comes to uh making repairs, root intrusion and other things, um, they were concerned that street trees would be very problematic and costly for them in the long term. Uh, so we have not moved forward with a street tree uh recommendation for your consideration. All right, number seven, uh, buffer depth requirement. All right, number seven, uh buffer depth requirement when adjoining agricultural uses. This has a uh, this affects and benefits, in my opinion, both the agricultural use and the residents uh that um immediately abut them. But the intent is to increase the buffer and opacity requirements for those residential developments that adjoin a bona fide farm or in a regular voluntary agricultural district. Um, the intent again is to protect the farming activity from the residents and the residence activity from the farming activity. So when you think about what happens on a residential lot uh in terms of uh invasive plantings, pesticide applications and lawn treatments that uh residents use, those can actually have a negative impact on an adjacent farm in terms of the agricultural that they may use. And on the flip side, farming can typically have smell and noise pollution that uh the residents uh adjacent to them aren't fond of either. So our current ordinance requires a buffer depth of fifty feet with a minimum of opacity of point two. The recommendation is to increase that buffer depth from fifty feet to one hundred feet and increase the opacity from point two to point six. Sure.
I also wanted to you to know that the Vet Military Agriculture Board actually came to us and asked us to increase this outside of assuming any amendments. So we kind of put this in with it because it was about the buffers and trees and everything like that. So this is a request from the B A D board. They would really like to see a little bit of increase in buffers around them because of spraying and stuff that they they see the negative impacts to them and they also see the negative impacts to the neighbors. And so this is their request. But again, I put this in here because I had to do with buffering trees.
Thank you.
And this is one, yeah, I've got a lot of questions about a lot of these. This is one that in general I do think makes sense, you know, having grown up out in the country, it's amazing. Somebody moves in next to a farm and then starts complaining about the farm that was there before they moved in. That pig was here before you and he makes the same noise as he did before you got here. And the same smells.
That's right. Yep. So again, the impact is very similar to the others. It again, it's going to be site-specific, but there could be additional costs to that development um based on uh plantings and and meeting buffer and opacity requirements uh necessary to get that separation between the uses. And there is the exact text amendment. Again, fairly simple and straightforward, easy to understand. Anybody have any questions on that one? All right, amendment number eight, uh to amend the approved landscaping species list. So again, when we talk about what defines a bush, a shrub, or understory tree, a canopy tree, um, we want to encourage the use of native landscaping species that are known to thrive in our area. And we want to strike and eliminate the use of those that don't thrive or are disease-prone um or create other nuisances to our areas. So we work with the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Office here in Brunswick County to take a look at the list that we had and um strike through and and remove those that they felt like were uh not successful here in our community and add to uh that list where we are including more native uh or other species that survive in our area. So I didn't bring the exact planning list, but I can get that for you specifically if you need it. Any questions on the intent or direction there?
I'm guessing the palm trees in my yard are not considered native. Didn't think so.
We're on the board. We are on the very, very border, the very top northern border where they survive.
Some state trees, South Carolina.
All right, so I I know there are two presentations listed on the agenda. I'm going to stand here and move into the ninth and final uh text amendment that we have proposed. And that's related to the establishment of a transportation overlay zone. The reason that these two are separated out is that what we've, the previous eight that we went through were all UDO amendments. When staff was going through and trying to address some of the residential concerns and and really try to address how the public interacts with and experiences development. We were trying to come up with ways to protect these uh main thoroughfares and corridors of the county. And we could not uh adequately do that through the UDO alone. And so that's why we shifted and came up with the transportation overlay zone. This is more of a zoning application that would apply to the uh immediately immediate properties that adjoin these interstates or these highways. Um, and so the intent behind it all again is to ensure that the the land adjacent to those highways is protected and preserved to the best of our ability while still allowing development to occur. One thing that we hear very frequently is, I don't want to look like Myrtle Beach. I don't want to look like such and such. That the natural characteristics of Brunswick County are worth preserving. We heard that in our blueprint Brunswick uh feedback and and uh citizen input that we got through that process. And when you move, when you travel along Highway seventeen and you leave Ori County and you enter Brunswick County, there is a physical difference in the characteristics of the look of how you leave one county and enter another. You can mention that about other corridors, even coming in from, you know, from Columbus or Pender County into Brunswick County. There is a distinct natural uh characteristic about Brunswick County that bring people here. It's what we're we're here to protect and it's one of the greatest uh attributes of our community. And so what we, what our ordinance though does is is very little to protect that. Right now, there is nothing that our ordinance uh has in place that would allow us to prevent ourselves from looking like Ori County or prevent ourselves from looking like areas that we uh would not necessarily want to see ourselves become. So the creation of a transportation overlay zone is one attempt, a a really large attempt and a step towards um making that happen. So again, I already touched on why a transportation overlay zone. Um, again, we can't really do these types of um, can't really address these concerns through the UDO. It must be done through zoning.
I've worked in Ori County. And I talked to people down there and I said, what what is the reasoning that shows differences of the planning? The thing is they designing it, they don't really have any zoning per se in Merle Beach, North Merle Beach as such. And you can have trailer parks sitting right next to a shopping center. So the thing is, that's part of the reason that we have a very strong planning perspective. We have, and we try to be careful as evidenced by this, although I'm not thinking this is, this is a lot after way through. But the point being is the people that are here, we don't want Ori County here. And I think that should find that across the board.
Yeah, and I think that that's what we're trying to protect. And so even less.
It it doesn't have to be this that causes. I'm saying it's being done outside of Ori County to screw themselves over so many ways because what they're doing is they're allowing any kind of development on top of it. Go look at Little Little River. They've got, they've got bamboo bunches down there. You've got bars that are out there. You've got all these, we don't have them in this county. So it doesn't require this to prevent Ori County from being here. What we have right now is a mindset overall to prevent that type of atmosphere to be in this county.
And I think what I'm trying to communicate is we have been fortunate that we don't have that. We have not, we've not achieved that by any ordinance that we have in place. We've achieved that by luck and by developers that have developed along the major quartet corridors.
Nothing to do with it.
Okay. One of the thing, we to the north in New Hanover County, New Hanover County has a transportation overlay zone over a portion of Highway seventeen. They have it over one forty, they have it over forty. When you drive those corridors, you don't see, you don't look into the backyard of someone. You don't look into the window of someone's home unless it was a pre-existing home that's been there generations. New development, you are not seeing that. New Hanover County has a transportation overlay zone that prevents that from happening. Not only does it require buffer widths and buffer opacity, but New Hanover County actually goes as far as restricting certain uses that can be done in those, in that transportation overlay zone. We're not uh recommending that. We're only recommending a buffer at this point to separate the types of residential uses from being so close to the rights of ways of these uh corridors. Again, I'll emphasize, this is residential only. This does not apply to non-residential, commercial, industrial or civic uses. This is only residential. But we've got the corridors listed there. Um, again, they're the major thoroughfares within Brunswick County. The column on the left is uh proposed for a fifty-foot buffer. The column on the right, Highway seventy-four, seventy-six, seventeen and two eleven are proposed with the one hundred-foot buffer. I'll get into that a little bit more uh in a little bit. But as far as our current ordinance, we do not have a transportation overlay zone in place at this time. The county did at one point establish a corridor overlay standard uh zoning uh application that was intended to improve the transportation and beautification of those major corridors. But that was taken out of the UDO and excuse me, taken out of zoning and eliminated back in two thousand and thirteen. So since that time, we have not had uh any such uh zoning application uh as this.
I'm just curious, uh, you mentioned Ori County and 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 they're like, and then you, then you said that it's uh, it's only residential. Are they not doing anything for commercial?
We are not, we are not.
And the one of the main goals is the buffers for major subdivisions and planned developments, but it does have street buffers for.
Yeah, but not, the fifty-foot and one hundred-foot buffer does not. I'm speaking to the fifty-foot and one hundred-foot buffer do not apply to commercial.
Okay, so.
And I'll get into that.
Buffer for commercial.
I'll get into that in a little bit.
Okay, that was.
Commercial, we're not, we're not expecting to change that at all. It is under the existing standard that that we have in place in the UDO.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
What's the difference between a fifty-foot buffer and a hundred-foot buffer? And don't give me the obvious answer of fifty feet. At 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 fifty feet tree buffer, I can't see through that. At a hundred feet, I still can't see through. It's it, what, what's changed?
I've got some examples that I'll show you, some pictures, examples of, give you a visual representation of what a thirty-foot buffer looks like versus a one hundred-foot buffer. Um, of real-world examples that we have here in Brunswick County. Uh, but the difference is really the opacity and being able to clearly see through something. Fifty feet is not as big as you would think it is when you're driving along Highway seventy-four or Highway seventeen.
It's this room. I'm not seeing through fifty feet of trees.
Well, and that's the point is that right now our opacity requirement for that uh area is is very uh minor. And so you would be able to see through that based on our current regulations. And I'll kind of give you some specific.
We're splitting hairs here.
Well.
Fifty feet is the is the width of this room or the length of this room. I'm not really seeing through that. Maybe if the house is painted bright red, I might see a little bit of red through fifty.
Is the proposal fifty for a hundred where we get to choose?
So the proposal is both, depending on the corridor. So I'll go back to that. So the the corridor is proposed to be affected by the T O Z. So this only applies to these corridors, no other road in Brunswick County. So the highways there on the left, so Highway seventeen Business, eighty-seven, one thirty, one thirty-three, one seventy-nine, nine oh four, nine oh six. Those are proposed to have a fifty-foot buffer uh applied to properties that immediately abut and have road frontage to those highways. The Highway seventy-six, seventy-four, seventy-six, Highway seventeen and Highway two eleven are the three corridors that are proposed to have the one hundred-foot buffer. So we're we're asking for both, but you're going to have a different requirement depending on which corridor you are on.
Yeah, when you say you're comparing, you you went to New Hanover County and New Hanover County has these buffers. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. Route seventeen through New Hanover County, not Market Street? So what buffer do they have?
Certain portions of Highway seventeen in New Hanover County have a transportation overlay zone. One forty and highway and Interstate forty also have transportation overlay zones applied to those that have both buffer requirements and uh types of use requirements.
I could see it on one forty.
Yeah, I mean, I can see it on the highways, on the US highways and and so you're you're putting two eleven in there as the of one hundred foot.
With the uh expectation that two eleven be a divided four-lane highway in the near future, yes.
Yeah. Uh, my my feelings on it is, um, I have talked with numerous people with DOT. I've talked to representatives in Rawlins and uh discussing the highways that are, these are our main highways in the county. And with that discussion, uh because as we grow, we need wider highways. And to be able to get that, we're going to have to expand the lengths. And and to me, it would uh save DOT's cost on buying the houses that are right on the road, the roads next to the road because we don't have enough buffer now. Because we're having, DOT's having to pay a fortune to get two eleven right now done. I mean, it's been very expensive to uh, in fact, we were the, our our road, uh, the cost was the highest in the state ever to get to eleven, the four-lane, the partial way. And it's because all this development was on the highway. And buying those businesses, buying the houses is not cheap and it, the cost is got, is going up. So I think this is a great idea to to uh move forward with, to protect the highways and to make sure we have room to expand.
All right, I'm going to dive into specifically the changes that we have recommended.
Can I ask one? We got US Highway seventy-four, seventy-six. I have industrial parks on either side of it. You want to put a hundred-foot tree in front of the industrial parks?
Nope. So this is only applicable to residential development. So commercial, industry, civic and public uses are exempt from the buffer requirements. So you can put a gas station right on the highway, you can put a mom-and-pop store right on the highway, you can put an industrial park right on the highway. And they would not have to meet the.
So so if we would have had this in place a while ago, Compass Point, for example, would have had a hundred-foot buffer and may or may not have had to build their fence or their wall.
So, yeah, so and I actually had that as a potential example um to kind of show.
Talking about expansion of roadway. The places that I've traveled, such as in Atlanta, which is probably not a good example, but certainly Charlotte as well as uh Raleigh, they use the meetings.
Use the median as.
Yeah, if they have to go from four-lane to a six-lane to an eighth-lane, they go into the meeting, the plusers right away. If you look at the right of way, they've got an expanded right way on both sides. And you'll notice when you go down these four-lane highways, that there's a fence line. So that's all back back in there as far as growth is concerned. Because the problem is DOT has to go ahead and condemn the property plus infrastructure, which is a big deal to begin with. So it is requiring an overlay zone to do this. There's other perspectives that DOT is least backed in.
Yeah, I'm not proposing this uh transportation overlay zone to help NCDOT. Uh, the proposal and recommendation is to limit the site and nuisance impacts that you have into the backyards of people's homes.
Well, I I drive to church once a week or so and I go through New Hanover County and I go Iowa one forty and I can see in the backyards of their, of their developments and everything when I'm driving through there. And they've got an overlay zone. I still see it. They got a wall. They got some woods, but I'm still seeing, I could see what's in the guy's backyard. I can see what's on the back porch.
Well, if you look at uh two eleven right now, uh where those uh condos, apartments or whatever they are, um, where the road is being expanded now, they're right on the right of way just about. They they are next to the highway. So I don't, uh, you know, if if, I don't know how you can say that to me, if we'd had this, they would not have been allowed to build those apartments right on the road because they're 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 right there on top of it. Uh, once that road's finished, they're going to be right there for that noise to be. You know, it's, to me, it's very unattractive. So um, I think that this is a good place to be. I mean, we're going to have to make a decision and we're going to have to protect the county to the best of our ability. So we need to think about this.
All right, so I'm going to dive in and kind of break down what they mean using our current ordinance versus the proposed ordinance on the two uh types of residential development that we see most often, major subdivisions and planned developments. So the top box there is major subdivisions. So currently, there's no boundary buffer required in our ordinance and there's a twenty-foot street buffer. So you have to be twenty feet off of that corridor. We do require one canopy tree or two understory trees for every hundred linear feet that are along that street buffer, but that's it. That and one canopy tree or two understory trees every hundred linear feet is not providing any buffer. So uh Commissioner Forte, you mentioned, I'm not going to be able to see into something like that. Well, with plantings every one hundred feet, you you could potentially, based on those site conditions, see clearly into uh the backs of homes. There's also currently no opacity requirement, again, allowing that opportunity to exist where you can see into the someone's backyard and see what they're cooking on their grill or, you know, what color blinds they have in their windows. And the idea behind it is to limit those particular impacts. And the idea behind it is to limit those particular impacts, especially as you're driving through the corridors. When we think about how the public interacts and and receives um development in Brunswick County, we hear often about clear cutting, um, uh, setting, you know, setting fire to the the remaining timber that's left on the site. Once it's done grading and 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 it's all right there in your face. Uh, by either requiring or establishing that buffer, you limit that. You, when you're driving down a corridor, your eyes aren't immediately attracted to someone's back fence or backyard or back window, it's giving you that buffer and that separation. You know, that's not me. This isn't me advocating for it and just trying to provide the intent and provide uh the the concern that we are trying to overcome as a as a result of these. So with the uh proposed buffer requirements for major subdivisions, you'll either get the fifty foot or a hundred foot buffer, depending on what corridor is located on. Um, and uh you'll have the opacity requirement that would need to be met either with fencing or landscaping to accomplish that. From a planned development standpoint, you can be as as close as uh fifteen feet. Um, most often though, you're seeing a thirty foot boundary. And again, planned development is what we see most often uh uh come through our planning department. Um, and so you're seeing a thirty foot boundary and I've got examples to share later of thirty foot boundaries of property that's take, development that's taking place on these corridors and you can visually see what that impact will be once those are done. Again, same thing with the proposed uh buffer is establishing those buffer widths and opacity requirements.
For those of us who are not experts on how to calculate opacity requirements, how does that proposed requirement compare to the planting of one canopy tree or two understory trees under the current?
So it's going to be very specific to the site and uh there are many different ways you can achieve achieve uh opacity. You can do it through berms, fencing and plantings. Uh, it's all spelled out currently in the U D O and we do not intend to modify or amend the current opacity definitions that we have. Um, I can share that with you as well, but it's specifically, you know, for instance, requires thirteen shrubs and six understory trees per, you know, fifty feet or something like that, depending on the opacity. So when you increase that, you're just increasing the plantings that will be required in that area, either new plantings or you have, um, you get it, um, you get sort of credit for existing uh landscaping that's there as well. So if you have a treed site, if the developer is intentional about it, they can come through and develop and not clear cut that uh buffer on the frontage of the property and they can uh potentially meet the buffer requirements and the opacity requirements without having to do any new plantings. So again, it's going to be very site specific to the impacts of uh that development.
I guess to rephrase my question, in the left column, it says one canopy tree or two understory trees per one hundred feet. What would those numbers change to to reach the zero point eight if they didn't through plantings?
You would have significant changes to meet that opacity requirement. You would be talking uh per linear, hundred linear feet. Your dozens of shrubs, your um probably dozens of trees. And that's if it's a completely clear site. So going to non residential inputs. So we talked earlier and again, we want to make it clear, the buffer width requirements are not applicable to non residential use. The only changes that the transportation overlay zone would apply that would affect commercial or non residential uses are related to those street buffers. We kind of touched on it earlier as well. Um, right now, the requirement is one canopy or two understory trees per one hundred linear foot. And we've increased that to ten shrubs and at least three canopy trees or four understory trees or a combination of one canopy tree and three understory trees every linear feet. So you're increased, you're basically quadrupling uh or even more when you uh factor in the shrubs, the uh uh the landscaping requirement between the non residential use and the uh the street corridor.
So this is in front of commercial?
Yes, this would be in front of a gas station, an auto body shop, a mall, a strip center.
So for every hundred feet, you want ten shrubs and three trees?
Correct.
How are you going to see the business as you're driving by it?
We'll show you examples of, uh, we can bring back some visual examples of where that has been implemented and development in the county. Um, and you're still able to see the 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 building and the sign clearly.
Running into so many places I've seen it in places in Florida where I live, there there else. You ride right by the business, you can't find it.
Yep.
Sign a little tight, it's slow, you've got a barn, you've got a park, you've got all these things, you can't see it.
Charleston and and Mount Pleasant, South Carolina are really good examples of that where they have extreme opacity and buffer requirements for their commercial development on their corridors. And that is not something that we are looking to emulate here. And I I think that you would find if I could get you a visual repute representation of that, I think you'll find that we're not anywhere close to obstructing the view of the business.
Is the intent with respect to the residential area with the buffer to avoid being seen from the roadway? Is that the idea?
So that's that's certainly part of it is is how when you're driving by a corridor and and some of the what, who knows what happens in someone's backyard, right? Who knows what condition they keep it in? And so providing a buffer between the the corridor and the folks traveling that corridor, you're protecting the aesthetic of the community and the characteristics of the community by not seeing into that. But more importantly, we are trying to preserve the existing treescape that is there. When you drive most of our corridors, yes, you're going to have some farmland in some of the areas, but by and large, our corridors are lined with trees. And so we are trying to prevent that from being uh taken away and and replaced with very minimal landscaping standards uh as a outcome of development.
If you go right now, you're going to see thirty and forty foot high pines. That's what you pretty much see if you drive down Old Old Ocean Highway going down through seventeen or going through, you're going to see mostly about ten foot pines. Now, they took probably about a part of the year, thirty years to grow. Okay, so you harvest pine, I think, my my family used to do this, they're about twenty year level. But the thing about it is, so you're going to put a buffer in, but you're still going to see uh two to three story building that's going to be required to be planted as buffer. You still going to see that, right?
Under the proposed.
What I'm getting at is, let's say you got somebody builds a two, three story building, house, whatever they do. Are you going to have trees that are going to hide that from the highway?
They may have to come in with some understory trees and some shrubbery to protect the low lying areas, but the certainly the pine trees and the scrub that are there are going to be uh able to be calculated to meet the opacity requirement.
Well, the other thing is if you drove five one forty, they've got that buffer, as you stated, and a wall. I think I'm still seeing the guy's backyard.
I I'm not familiar with that, but.
Yeah, just drive a five one forty, go across highways, go across uh four twenty one, you're going to be a look down into this neighborhood that's over there and there's a wall and there's trees there.
On the river?
Yeah, well, beyond the rivers, you still see right into the.
Yeah, there's one right on, right on the river, just across the bridge so that you can see into, but it meets, it has a and and so again, going back to the whether fifty foot or a hundred foot is appropriate, that meets their T O Z setback requirements.
Because the thing is privacy is not.
You also have a street separating the major thoroughfare, then you have a street and then you have that particular subdivision, if if we're talking about the same one.
Now, the one I'm talking about, you just see it because the roadway is higher than the development.
Yeah.
And so you can see down. So anyway, I think the one you might be talking about is if you're going northbound, it's going to be on the west side of the highway.
Um, I don't mean to interrupt. Don't you finish? Um, I was just curious because uh I know our church, when they built the church, they had quite a few um trees they had to plant. So how is it diff, I I can't see why we need this many more. Uh, are you adding shrubs that's not been there before? Is that the?
Yes, shrubs have not been a part of the uh landscape requirement for the street buffer specifically.
So I'm not sure if two trees aren't sufficient, but I'm not, I'm not sure about that because we got a lot of trees and and it take, it took a lot of the parking space um for the church because we had to put so many trees, so many, many.
A good example, so our current requirement, um, you familiar with the golf barn on Highway seventeen?
Yes.
There are six understory trees planted on the front, frontage of that site.
Okay.
So that's the, that's sort of the minimum requirement that we have. When you drive by there, you barely even can catch that there's a tree planted there because they're so far apart and there's so few of them. Uh, not calling golf barn out by any stretch of the imagination, but just wanted to give you a reference point. So in that situation, we would be looking to have additional canopy and understory trees on that frontage to kind of break it up so that you, not that you can't see the site, you can't see the commercial entity, but you just add additional landscaping, uh, you know, to pro- provide that buffer between the transportation corridor and that site.
I'm I'm going to have to look at that a little bit further, but but I will.
Yep. So and then finally is the parking area standard. So again, this is non residential only. Uh, this is something that's new and would require um any street, off street parking with ten or more spaces that are either locating, located on the corridor frontage or within fifty feet of the public right away to be landscaped with a three foot tall low screen. So you're going to achieve that with shrubs and 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 whatnot. The intent behind that is what we are finding is with parking lots that are uh facing the transportation corridors in the evenings, when folks turn on their headlights and they're parked in that parking lot, their headlights shine into the transportation corridor or vice versa. The transportation corridors headlights shine into the commercial use. So by establishing that low screen, you are eliminating the or reducing the light pollution that you get from both uh from both sides. And so um again, this is, that's the intent behind it is to uh offset the the headlights and the light pollution that you get from one to another. If you're offsite or the parking is behind the facility uh or not within fifty feet of the right away, this uh screening requirement would not be uh necessary. And right now, we don't have any landscape requirement for parking areas that immediately abut a transportation.
Let me ask you a question. Trying to get a mental picture. I'm 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 a visual guy. Okay, so I'm just trying to get a mental picture. The Walmart in Southport that has that big, the the entire front of it, other than the two driveways, is that big retention pond. So now you, and and it's pretty deep. I'll bet you that's seventy five feet. So now you want, where that ends, you want hedges, pine trees, something beyond that. So you've taken out at least a row of parking spaces. Right?
So they will have setbacks that there before their use can start. And so you're likely going to be able to accomplish the landscaping standards in your setbacks. So you're, we're not likely taking any developable land away from any commercial use.
Taking away parking spaces.
Shouldn't. You shouldn't because you can't put parking right up on the property line. You're so, you're going to have a setback before that, before you can start to disrupt the property and that includes parking lot. So you're going to be able to achieve your landscape plantings necessary before your parking lot and facility starts. This shouldn't affect developable acreage.
Well, do you understand what I'm saying? With like that Walmart.
Well, I know, yeah, I know what you're saying. But they've got, they got trees and stuff there, but the um there still has the setback where the parking stop, because there's a road. There, the parking is set back. Um, so.
Truck spot.
Right, well, they're not supposed to.
But they're always there.
Well, they do sometimes. They do sometimes.
There are also incentives that we have established that I will get to in just a minute for the parking areas. So if you retain a tree or a heritage tree, you can get a one for one or two for one credit related to retaining those trees or uh reducing the number of parking lot island trees or landscaping that is necessary. So again, we're we're giving, we're trying to encourage folks to not remove existing trees on sites. Every every amendment that we've talked about tonight, there's some sort of element of, you know, going towards retention and hoping that the development community is more intentional about maintaining the existing uh treescape that we have. I'll go on a little bit more because I've got a few more slides on this one particular one. I know there's a lot to digest. So again, going back to the incentives, I just uh mentioned that. Uh, I'm not going to read that verbatim, but again, the intent behind it is to get them to retain heritage trees or be given credit for uh keeping existing trees. Also gives the planning director the authority to approve minor site change and setback requirements if it means the preservation of a heritage tree. Um, so again, being intentional about trying to preserve the uh treescape that we have uh in Brunswick County. So one of the things in talking with the development community and getting feedback from them that they recommended related to the T O Z is for those residential developments along the T O Z corridors um that require a hundred foot buffer, allow that buffer to be reduced to seventy feet. If the developer installs an eight foot or ten foot tall fence and meets the minimum opacity requirements between the fence and the road corridor. Staff thought that that was a very reasonable uh recommendation. And again, it's achieving sort of the same thing. You're you're addressing the aesthetic uh potential nuisances that development has and we could get behind that um as a alternative or as a um uh another path for the development community to use. So how does this impact residential development? So the the buffers are the biggest things. Um, the increased buffer widths um are likely to reduce the developable acreage for the residential product projects along those corridors. Um, so again, they're going to be site specific. You can't apply and just say universally across the board, it's going to impact us because you know, flood plains, wetlands, where the open space is placed on the property by the development, all of those factors may or may not impact, um, you know, uh based on this buffer requirement. Buffers can be used to meet open space requirements. So if you place a fifty foot or one hundred foot buffer on that community, those buffers can go towards meeting that open space requirement, again, sort of uh offsetting the negative impact uh that that development may have. It doesn't apply to small track or single use development either. So I want to make sure we emphasize that. Developments, uh, you know, under eleven units, not going to be affected, single use development, not going to be affected. Um, as a result of the buffers, you're probably going to see increased property values um as those sites, you know, we we talked with a a developer recently, uh Commissioner Sykes and and Mr. Stone and I did. And they understood they're they're building a a product that will be immediately on Highway two eleven. And they know that the units that are immediately on Highway two eleven are not going to be able to be leased or sold for the same amount as those off uh because of the nuisance associated with being right on that corridor. So by establishing that buffer, you're likely increasing the property values of those homes. Um, the development community uh contends significantly that this is a property taking. Obviously, by uh increasing that buffer width, you are limiting the development opportunity that they have on that site. Um, and so they contend that that is a property taking of Brunswick County. As far as commercial development impacts, again, the buffers don't apply. Uh, only the landscape standards related to parking lots uh and the road frontage uh would be affected. Um, this does not apply to agricultural uses. Um, and uh so there certainly could be some additional expenses associated with commercial development as a result of the planning standards. Any questions there?
No, uh, no, but I do want to um a comment. Um, Frank, just to give you a picture of um one area, if you go down Village Road, uh, those apartments or houses or whatever they are, they're right on the road and the kids play. The back, the backyard to them is on the road and any child could be picked up out of that little section there if they just stop. I mean, it's it's terrible uh when you go by there to see that that's all they have. Uh, they're right on the road, right on the highway. And and a buffer like this would be beneficial to those types of uh de- of development. Right, but it's an example. I'm giving him example. It's it's on two eleven too.
So speaking of examples, so being visual, I'm a visual guy too, uh Commissioner Forte. These are just Google Maps screenshots uh from recent development that we've seen in Brunswick County. Uh, this is the Mill Creek development uh on Highway seventeen. So the top picture is the before. Uh, the bottom picture is the current. Both of those pictures were taken at at roughly the same season. So you're not getting any different, you know, vegetative impact. But that bottom picture, you can see the uh orange silt fence that is installed. That would be the back lot line of those properties. So when you're driving down that corridor, you will be able to uh pretty clearly see into the backyards of those uh those properties. This is an example on Highway seventeen as well. Uh, this. This is an example on highway seventeen as well. This is. A property that was farmed at first. So you can see the top picture is just what used to be in what is an abandoned agricultural use. And the bottom is the site being developed currently. So this is going to this project specifically is going to have townhomes that will face highway seventeen. They will not face highway seventeen. The rears of the townhomes will face highway seventeen. And these will be multi-story, a multi-story project. So when this is complete, you will have a six foot burn that runs along the. The edge of highway seventeen with limited plantings. But beyond that six foot burn, you will be able to see very clearly within thirty feet of the right of way. The backside of those particular townhomes. So this is a development that's underway, not yet come to fruition. This is a an example off of highway seventy eighty seven, excuse me, George two. This is a project that, as you can see, the top picture there was a a treed area. The bottom picture there is a completely clear cut site with a six foot burn being established. That black silt fence will be the back of the property line for those homes that are adjacent to highway seven. So we don't see the impacts now because these developments haven't necessarily gone vertical. But these pictures give you a good indication of what we're trying to overcome. We're trying to limit being able to see directly into backyards and experience development right on the corridor. Compass Point was mentioned earlier. The top picture is the picture of the area of Compass Point prior to the multi-story. Multi-family portion of that development being created. And so the bottom portion is is what we have now. And so again, this is sort of just an example. We know that there's future improvements to be made on that Compass Point site. But having the multi-story development immediately upon the highway. When it used to look like a tree line corridor, that changes how people impact or how people experience development in the community. This is a new development off of highway two eleven. That is a completed home. So that home is thirty foot off of the edge of highway two eleven. So when you drive by. You'll be able to see what that person's cooking on their grill. These are some examples of positive buffers within the county. So the top one is River Sea off of highway two eleven and the bottom one is Brunswick Plantation. Both of those have a one hundred plus foot buffer before you get to the residential development. You see significant opacity, you see large buffers. And you see that it was intentional from those development communities to separate the transportation use from the residential use. So these are just, I wanted to show positive visual examples of what we're hoping to accomplish via these text amendments.
Do you have an example of a fifty foot?
A fifty foot buffer, not one that has been landscaped. And so that's what we're finding in Brunswick County is is developers are even. They are either intentional about it and you see this. You can name, you know, Brunswick Forest, you can name several other developments, not necessarily in Brunswick County. Several developments though that have made it an intentional to separate those uses. We are either finding you're either one or the other, and there's really not a lot that have sort of that minimum fifty foot treed. Or land heavily landscape buffer, but I'll try to see if I can hunt one down for you.
Way to go.
So that was the nine text amendments. I didn't touch on. The other text amendment that is being considered by the planning board and that's related to the TIA. That is on the agenda for the planning board to discuss tonight. And so hopefully Kelsey will be successful in coming up with a recommendation from them on that. Despite, you know, the board already suggesting to the planning board what you guys want to see. They are taking that under consideration and deliberating on that themselves and hopefully we'll have an outcome. But I'm here to understand, you know, feedback, what direction you guys wish to see. What changes you wish to see based on the proposal? Again, not not all of these are right for Brunswick County. We don't expect these to all be approved based on the recommendation that we have. We know that there's room for numbers to be changed and altered. We have engaged the development community on numerous occasions. Unfortunately, we have not received recommendations for how we can adjust what we have proposed. The feedback that we've gotten from the development community is simply been defined as no. And so until we have alternatives or until we know what maybe, you know, some of these things they can live with or can't live with. Or some suggestions for changes in the numbers or the percentages. We're really left to present this to you as is because we don't really have any other input to provide you. From their standpoint, other than no.
Okay, Commissioner Williams, let's start.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, this is a lot of information. So I've got a lot of studying and reading and reviewing to do. I'll touch on the TOZ first and I'll say that I have heard more concern about that than anything, everything else put together from landowners in this county. I have received calls and emails and things from people I have not heard from in a long, long time who said, what the heck is this? Some of whom were here when it was discussed before. So that's one I. I have substantial concerns about, you know, with any of this, you know, I want to make sure we're not using a nuclear bomb to kill a fly. And that's that's something that's one of my concerns. In regard to certainly, I absolutely don't want us to look like Myrtle Beach. But to me, what makes Myrtle Beach look like Myrtle Beach is all the cluttered commercial, not the residential. So I would think I would worry that even if we did adopt the TOC, that it's focusing maybe on the wrong thing there. And I'm not saying I support it because right now, again, I have major concerns. But when I drive through Myrtle Beach, it's all the jumbled up commercials that to me. Makes me happy when I cross back into North Carolina. Let's see, I had a couple of other things. One thing that gives me some, another thing that gives me some heartburn is. Telling a landowner that they have to create a treescape where there was not one because it's been farmland for forty years. You know, that's to me, that's a different animal than keeping the trees that are there and preserving the existing treescape. So that's something that just gives me some, if the guy's been farming that and it's been corn and hay and soybeans for thirty years. And suddenly if they want to quit farming it, they gotta spend a bunch of money and plant a bunch of trees.
And we talked about that at a staff level. And the problem with that is we can't delineate between what's been an established farm. And a guy who clear cut to get timber value out of it before it was sold to a home builder. And so we can't delineate between those two. So we simply have to come back and require that that landscaping if that's what we choose to to do.
You know, and there's just a lot of things in here. And one thing, you know, I do want to point out one thing. And I heard your statement about the development community just saying no, but there was a developer recommendation in this PowerPoint that was something they. So, you know, I think there's something maybe getting lost in translation here because they feel like they've submitted ideas. So that's something. We're not, I'm not going to talk about that anymore in this meeting, but I do hear that, you know, and it's. I just think we need to make sure that whatever we do, we vet it. And I'm certainly not ready to vote on anything or schedule a public hearing today because a lot of information here. You know, the planning board certainly made their opinion heard and I'd be interested in hearing if they have recommended alternatives. I don't know if that question's been posed to them or not.
Our staff did during the planning board meeting, asked for alternatives and recommendations and just did not receive any. I have solicited feedback from development representatives for multiple months now. Can provide you guys with the email, emails, multiple emails. And so we're we're doing our best. We're engaging, we're encouraging. And I will say that I have had numerous conversations with developers. I can think of four specific developers, major landowners, major developers. In Brunswick County. And the feedback is mixed when you talk, when you get to talk to them one on one. I I may have a conversation with one of one of them landowner that you, if I named his name, you would never expect the words to come out of his mouth. But he supports every single one of them and wonders why we didn't do this fifteen years ago. I talked to another developer and he says, you'll put me out of business. You know, this will be the worst thing ever. You're overreacting, etc. So, you know, we're getting a mix of feedback from the development community. And and specific to these, I will say, and and I'll share this. The number one thing that staff has heard about in terms of complaints related to these recent amendments is the TIA. The TIA has been the singular biggest impact to the development community. And and these almost are irrelevant to many of them as a result of that. So my conversation back is, you know, there's like, let's have conversation. Let's figure out what works for both sides and and can we come to a a middle ground from from both perspectives? So that's been my experience with the development community so far. And obviously, we hear from the public at every single one of our planning board and board of commissioner meetings, so.
Just to clarify one thing, the feedback I've heard, I agree with the feedback from developers on the TIA. The feedback I heard on the TOZ was from landowners who aren't developers, but that's a public hearing.
Yep, and we have found that as well because our our planning staff received dozens of calls when those mailed notices went out. A lot of it was misinformation. A lot of them thought that it would be applicable to their property when it wasn't. Because we made the notice not just to the properties that are immediately adjacent and affronting those corridors. But we expanded it to properties that are outside of that, just so that everyone was aware of what we were considering. So we got calls from people saying, what are you trying to do to my property? And when we drilled it down, we figured out that they would not be affected by the TOZ. We also tried to address some misinformation that was out there related to this affecting commercial. That was a big thing. One particular development said, hey, I've got this large big box development that's coming on highway seventeen. And your TOZ is going to kill it. This doesn't apply to commercial. And so when we had that conversation with him, we tried to educate him on that. I think he still believes the TOZ would affect his commercial property. But we're we're trying to address those concerns and make sure everyone understands that this is just related to residential development.
All right, others, other comments?
Well, I think you've done a pretty good job of giving us a layout of the direction we need. I would, I I know that there's a few minor changes that I would like to change. But I would like to have to go ahead and set a public hearing. Sometime in August, at least that should give us a time to look at all this. Because we're gonna have to do something for our county if we're gonna protect the roads and the. The appearance. So we need to move forward on it.
I'm not even close to going to a public hearing with this. There's months of vetting this. There's parts of this that to me are just crazy. I I think this is the perfect way to one hundred percent kill building. To kill business, to kill all of it. This hundred foot buffers to me, it's a huge swath of land that.
What about that?
It's not up to a developer to provide. Well, a a right of way for us.
Well, it's a lot here to digest. It's essential to commit a plan and turn it down. Said, no, I mean, we put him in that position. They said, no, I don't know why. Because that shouldn't have really ended up. The plan says no. That's their job. They fit it. And it seems that you're, even though we've got, if I'm not mistaken, we've got some people in the community in the back. They've indicated me that they've tried to add input. But it doesn't seem to be a workable thing. It seems like to me that. Forgive me for aggressing, but I will say this. I gave my daughter a car. Okay, it's a car that we had a long time, fifteen years. She needed one. Am I going to tell her how she's supposed to drive or where she's supposed to drive or what she's supposed to put in it? No. I've got I've got friends that have had farms. And they sell it. Are they supposed to now tell somebody how is somebody supposed to develop it? I don't think so. We got a person that comes to a property and they make a decision what they're gonna buy, like my son-in-law and daughter just did. Am I supposed to be able to tell them that you can't buy that because it's too close to the road, not close enough to the road, doesn't have the right tree, whatever? It's really a customer. I will leave here. I will buy gasoline. It's like, don't tell me where I'm supposed to buy gasoline. I mean, there's some aspects that the individual has to make that thing. We're caveat on your state. And people have to look into these things. And so there are so many different things. And I get it, people truly. You know, they don't want, they're gonna, I get it, eighty percent of the things are done by forestmen. We can't touch that anyway because, and as you stated. The thing about it is they're gonna have to clear cut anyway because that way they can look at the trees in. But I don't think people really have a big deal if they were clear cutting because it's a farmer. I have friends who are farmers. If they clear cut and put in a a cornfield for next year's crop, I don't think people are really going to complain about that. But if they're gonna put a development in there, yeah, they are. Because they don't want to see it. There's a lot of people here that I've heard in different times that I've looked at really live. They got trees all around where they live. They can't even see where the developments are. They're nowhere near the developments. Yeah, they don't like it. And I don't know why. And that's fine. You know, you have your opinion. And the thing is to say it, make it like Myrtle Beach. No, I can tell you that the people that I have known through the years. And just as a public disclosure, my family was in the real estate business. I didn't like the real estate business. I went into television. I went to grad school to do that and I worked in network stuff and then I'll teach. I'm not into real estate business. My brother is, but I'm not. My license is in that. And when I was in it, I was primarily working in property management or I was doing customer service. So the thing is, I'm not a developer, but I understand their constraints. But if somebody says, well, I'm in the business, no, I'm not. I'm looking at what's overall aspect of it. This is a thing where an individual. Who buys property should have that right to do certain things unless it is owners. Like they're gonna put an industrial area next to a residential area. We have ordinances for that. We do have these things. And you know what? I I I get it. I I, you know, the the buffer, yeah, I've been forty. I drive over and I know two developments that I can see in their backyards, even though they have these these things, they're not, this is, it sounds good. Doesn't necessarily work. So my my point is, it sounds good and as as Mr. Williams said, we're kind of using a bomb. It's like hunting with a halibut. If we're, and I've worked on two ordinances in this county in sixteen years, two of them. I had one. Golf cart and noise ordinance. Those are two of them. The noise ordinance took a year. You'd think it'd be simple. Everybody thinks. No, county's too big. There's too many different components. What's, how do you, how do you measure audio? When it gets involved, you've got a nuisance dog that doesn't resonate. How does that become? We had to go through all these golf cart orders. Start out, set that bar, make it sound really easy. No, by the time we had to do every single thing we did, it took a year to develop that. Now, some people say we're not fast enough. My gosh, I got in this office in this in this meeting at two o'clock. There's arrows everybody hears had to have a bathroom break. It's down. It's four thirty. And this isn't complicated. For crying out loud, if this is not, if you don't have the information from the developer community, then you jolly well need to go and get it. And the planning part, that's what they do. The planning board does this. So I think that the planning board should either come back with something that's a work. Or if they say it doesn't work, I think there's a rationale as to why it didn't work. And do a a public hearing when we've already spent two hours. Having death by PowerPoint and being able to do this. No, I'm sorry. I don't, as not as Mr. Cortez said, I don't think we're anywhere near this.
Just to clarify, appreciate that feedback. In February, this board unanimously directed staff to bring back these presentations. So we're not here because staff is pushing this. We're here because you guys asked us to do it. As far as the development community, I would gladly say, and I'll gladly provide you email. On May eighth, I solicited feedback from two individuals begging for input, begging for feedback. Requesting a meeting if necessary with the development community. I got zero response. The response, the response today, the response today, you've you've received the official response from the Home Builders Association and NC base. You guys have received the same feedback that staff has received. Each one of those feedbacks specifically say, we object. We would like table for further discussion. Not a single one of those documents suggests alternative solutions for us to consider.
Excuse me, but isn't table for further discussion meaning that there would be discussion?
How do you have discussion when they won't solicit, when they won't uh come to a to to table to meet?
I think base is sitting back there in the back of the.
Correct.
You can talk with him now?
Correct. I've asked for a meeting with them and he's denied.
Let me, let me bring this back around real quick. First off, let let me just tell you that I I've got a list and of all the documents that that you have been delivered. To you and emails that have been sent and everything. First off, I support staff a hundred percent. I think you have done a gentleman's job with trying to keep up with individuals that. In in our community, it's development first and the citizens second. And that's a shame. It should not be that way. We've got a planning board that either needs to step up or they need to step out. Bottom line. And I I'm more than happy to. You know, if if they don't want to step up and address these issues and help. And help us be part of the positive part of the process to go through this and to come back with some real. Tangible suggestions that we can move forward with, then, then sure, they can need tender their resignation and I'll, I'll gladly accept it. And we'll find someone else that can do that. You know, it's uh, we, we continue to keep pushing this and pushing this. As, as our areas continue to just, we're, we're losing all of our vegetation. You know, it, and, and I guess the one thing that bothers me about all of this. We've got local developers that have developed properties and communities that have done it. And you, matter of fact, you showed examples up here where they have provided buffers that nobody complains about. You know, it, it's been going on for years. They've been developing for years. You know, I, I'm fortunate enough to live in a community that has custom builders. They've got no issues. None. It, it's obviously it's the track builders that want to come in and just remove everything. And start all over again and they don't want you telling them how to do it. Uh, somebody, something needs to give. Now granted, I don't know that I agree with everything that you presented this afternoon. I, I agree with the, the, the buffer zone uh, issues in a number of places. And, and so, some of the uh, some of the transportation overlay, yeah, I, I could see where it could be tweaked. But those are things that could be tweaked and we could bring this back and, and get something in place. I know that I've even heard you say that you, you've got a meeting coming up. Hopefully with the development community in the coming days or weeks.
We actually had one uh, a couple of Fridays ago with the development community at their request to discuss some utility and permitting concerns. And we had that meeting.
And do you have another?
We do not have a meeting scheduled uh, currently for meeting with the development community. I did speak with a developer this afternoon. Who indicated that he would assist me in establishing that meeting with the development community to kind of walk through some of these. And that's, that's what we've been asking for all along. It's, I, I wish I could bring you a recommendation. I don't mean to be, you know, I. I don't have anything to truthfully tell you other than the development community has said no to these options and their communication to you reflects that. I would love to sit down at a table, digest each line of this and work through compromise that we can find with them.
And, and I have to remind myself too, that we've got a hundred and sixty thousand people in this, this county. Not all of them are developers. Yeah. And so, I mean, we, we need to focus on, on what's right. And, and we still need the development. I mean, we need positive development. And I, and I, I disagree on the, on the fact of being lucky. I think we are lucky that we're not part of Myrtle Beach. Uh, you know, we're, we're fighting that dog on another, I'll have a meeting tomorrow, fighting that dog on another area with Myrtle Beach. But the uh, uh, the, the big thing is we have had commercial facilities in our southern end of the county. That we had to come up with uh, creative ways to move those businesses along and move them out of this county. Because they were not the type of businesses for this county. And so I know we've had problems. I know we've had issues. But my suggestion is, is to get with that developer that talked to you today or yesterday. Have your meeting, give the commissioners an opportunity to look over this, give the planning board. One more opportunity to look over this. And then we set a date that you come back. And give us everything after you've met with the developer, after you've heard from the commissioners. And after you've heard from the planning board. And then let's, let's set, I agree with Commissioner Sykes. I mean, let's don't kick this down the road too far. Let's go ahead and sometime in, in August, go ahead at one of those two meetings and go ahead and move this thing forward. That, I mean, somebody looking over this in a, in a decent meeting ought to be able to mark it up and come up. With what they feel like is right. And if they need to mark through something totally, that's okay too. I mean, it gives us a starting point. But if we keep kicking it, we're not getting anywhere.
And I want to reiterate that staff doesn't expect all nine of these to be adopted as is. These were just our recommendation based on, you know, industry best practice, what other jurisdictions do. Does it necessarily mean it works for Brunswick County? No. And so we're here to get that feedback. We welcome that feedback from the five of you, from the planning board, from the development community, from the residents. We need that feedback. And right now, we haven't really gotten that to, to be able to amend these any more than what they already are.
Are, are y'all okay with that? I mean, y'all look at it, let the planning board look at it and the.
I want to say one more thing before, uh. My thing is, I'm, we're not trying to take away property rights of anybody that's bought property or whatever. But for us as commissioners, our job with the UDO, the UDO is to provide. The safety and the uh, the promote health and safety and general welfare of the residents of our county. And if we don't have decent regulations in place, even though some might think they're over, overkill. We're hurting our citizens. And, and we need to protect our citizens. So we need to move forward, just like Commissioner Thompson said, we need to make a decision. If you need to meet with the developer and try to adjust some of this stuff. But we have to, to, to me, we have to correct the problems that we've got. We got problems.
Right. Can I, without being into, every time I go to speak, somebody steps over me and speaks.
Well, I'm sorry.
Um, I, I'm not even close to having a public hearing. Public hearing is the precursor to having a vote on this. We're not at that point. There's too many variables here. There's too many things that still need to be studied and vetted properly. You got nine different changes here that we obviously do not agree on. So, it seems to me the course of action would be to call a meeting someplace. Get the developers in a room with staff. One or two of us should be there as well. I mean, we did that with the developers on the, the utility increases. I was at that meeting. I heard from all thirty developers that were there and then they grabbed me in the parking lot afterwards. That's how it should be done. It's get everybody in the same room. This is what we're proposing, which oh, by the way, only started out at the beginning of the year in January or February, it was, it was sent to staff. Staff presented this to the planning board where they unanimously said no. And now you bring it to us and you wanna go to a public hearing and a vote. Something's wrong.
I'm not hearing a public hearing. The only thing I'm hearing is have a meeting with the various groups.
That's what I'm.
And as long as we do that, then once we have that meeting, then come back to us sometime in August. So that we put a deadline on it, come back to us in August. Then if we like what we see, then we can set a public hearing.
That's where I'm at. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm not looking to set a public hearing or anything in August. Let's get, let's set a date and a place and tell the developers, this is your one shot. If you don't show up and tell us what it is that you have a problem with, well, then the heck with you. We're gonna do this. That's where we should be. Okay? And yet everybody, all the players gotta be in a room. It could certainly be right here. Come, this is the date and time we're doing it. If you don't show up, you have nothing to say. Then we're gonna do what we gotta do. Okay? I mean, it's just, and I agree with Commissioner Williams. I go through Myrtle Beach. I was there yesterday. I was all the way down by the airport, took my grandson to the trampoline place down. Is, is Route seventeen, uh, King George Highway and, and the bypass are two totally different roads. If you go down King George Highway, it is nothing but commercial. That one development, Briar or something or other, yeah, they got a buffer. Briar Cliff. That's true.
Yeah.
Briar Cliff has a buffer. But if you go down the bypass, where there's developments, there's buffer. Okay? So it, it's not all of Myrtle Beach looks like that. If all you're comparing is King George Highway, yeah, it's horrendous. It's worse than Las Vegas. I don't want it to look like that either. Okay? But let's get all the players into this room. You got your opportunity to speak. I don't care if we sit here for five hours. I'll be part of it. But if they don't show up, then shut up. It's just that simple to me. But as far as setting hearings, we're not even close to that.
Commissioners, wings.
I agree with that approach. I would say we need to get a couple of the planning board members to be there as well.
Yeah.
Uh, and we did mention getting, getting feedback from the planning board, but their next meeting is in an hour and nineteen minutes. I don't know that we can legitimately get feedback from them. This month's meeting, we gotta give them some notice as well.
I think if we set a, a come back to us at the, our last meeting in August, the nineteenth. That ought to give everybody time to meet, discuss, review again and come back to us on the nineteenth. That way the earliest that we would go to a uh, a public hearing would be in September. Um, you know, if, if, if things look okay on the nineteenth.
I don't know that that gives us enough time. If you're gonna get everybody in the room together, that's probably not gonna be till August. And then it goes back to staff. They gotta figure out, okay, and decipher everything. Well, there's this, there's this, there's this. They gotta decipher everything. I don't know that you're gonna be able to do it.
I think if you, I think if you put it off any longer than that, you're, you're gonna run into people.
We haven't been here long. I don't know why everybody seems to think that everything was started back in February.
Well, you're already in July and we're talking about the end of August for the next meeting.
Um, well, if they, if we have them hopefully brings, at least bring back results of a discussion.
Yeah.
At the first chance you have. I mean, if you can't have that meeting till that day in August, it might be September, you know, if it's.
Yeah. We're tentatively to set it for the nineteenth. And if you can't do anything until September, then that's fine. But at least we know that something's being done to address it. Uh, and get everybody involved.
Sir.
Okay. Is everybody okay with charging in with that?
Okay. All right. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Lord, thank you. Oh boy. All right. So let's move into board appointments. And you got the substance abuse addiction and mental health. And we're looking at, um.
Can I open to the screen?
It's gracious. Yeah. I'm gonna need the screen on this one. There you go. All right. So.
Yourself to the JCPC on piece of it, there's a proposition that we went through the May and June appointments for Mr. Marlowe.
So that, is that our Marlowe or who is that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not larger than one.
So we need to appoint him then?
Yes, sir.
I'll move to appoint the bar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
All right.
It's also been brought to my attention that they need to do the JCPC roster annually. So that roster needs to be approved at senior cap as well. Just in the general overall.
We have to approve the RBCP roster.
So all right, you got a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye, that's a no brainer. Okay. That's just a requirement. Every year we'll have to do that? Reappoint everyone?
Yes.
Okay. I sat on that board for seven years. I don't ever remember once doing that.
If you're missing.
No, 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 sir. But for seven years that I was on that board, we never once did that.
I was hoping for fourth this, yeah.
And then the substitutes, there's a mental health commission.
You need, you need one for my district and, and I would like to appoint Samantha Hickman to that position.
For District Five, I'd like to appoint Jeremy Gunn.
All right. You got a second for those two?
Second.
Gotta be one of you three.
Second. Gotcha. All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Is that it? All right. Now we need a, a delegate for the NC. Uh, you got, you got one more?
Also, for Asia Austin from insurance offices, Mr. Oliver is second down.
Okay.
Where is that?
Uh, what board is that? For.
I don't even know about this.
Oh, substance abuse. Okay.
I'm doing.
Second, second all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Did that get everybody? I didn't even know that was needed. Okay. Well, then let's go to the NCACC voting delegate appointment. And do we have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to have our vice chairman serve in that position. You know, says to have objection.
Okay. Motion is second and discussion. You're none all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Is there other business? Yeah, I, I do. I do. I tell you, I've got a, an item. I got two items, matter of fact. It has come to my attention that we have uh, county appointed boards. That may or may not be doing minutes, but when they have public comments, they're not uh, accepting. A name or an address from the person when they do public comments. So I would like to make the motion that we require all meetings that take place under, that are under county appointed committees. That if they have public comment, that it would be required that the public provide their name and their uh, address. Just like they do whenever they.
I'll second that. I thought every board did that.
No.
They would.
No.
And before we vote on it, are they, you said they're not all taking minutes?
Uh, some apparently may not be doing minutes.
Well, we should include that in motion.
Minutes as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, all right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. My second uh, thing that I've got on here is that the uh, I don't know if y'all have had the opportunity this week. To either go to Southport or drive down to Myrtle Beach or go to any of our beaches in Brunswick County.
I've done all the above this week.
Well, I, I hope you, I hope you sit in traffic a short period of time. Traffic is horrendous. I mean, it is horrendous all over this county right now. And one of the things that I think contributes to that is that. There's two point five million dollars of our money that are county money that's not coming to the county. But it's going to our tourism uh, development authority, our TDA. To figure out how to spend to invite people to Brunswick County. And to be quite honest with you, I don't know that we need to be soliciting people to come to Brunswick County. I think they know where Brunswick County is now. And so what I would like to do, it's my recommendation that we. Charge staff with coming up with a description of how that money could best be used. So that we can go during the next session of legislature, we can go before the legislature with a goal. Uh, to, to redesignate where that money needs to go, whether it needs to go beach re-nourishment. Where it needs to go for canal, uh, dredging, where it needs to go for our school system, our, our community college. It might even go for transportation issues somewhere. Seeing how that's where most of our problems are with what, what's being created by this. But I guess what I'm looking for is for us to take an official act to charge staff with getting together and coming back with recommendations to us. So that we can put something together in a bill format to send to Raleigh.
I agree with that.
Obviously that would be the long session that starts.
Yeah, it'd be a long session. But it gives staff an opportunity to, to flesh it out and gives us an opportunity to, to review it.
Do we need a motion of that effect? Are you making a motion?
I, I can make a motion. We just direct staff. What do y'all feel?
I think you just direct staff.
I'm gonna send a minute, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So if it's recorded in the minutes, then staff's got it, right?
Yes, sir. We got a show.
One comment I'll make on that, you know, to use economic development language, obviously economic development does marketing, but they also do product development, which is site development.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, beach re-nourishment would be product development, you know, cause, you know, the same people will come back to this county over and over. There are a lot of things like that that could be put forward that are developing the product that's already there.
Yeah. I mean, advertising in Ohio and Montana, everywhere else about, hey, come to Brunswick County. I just don't see it. Uh, you know, and, and you're, we're not talking about spending small dollars. We're talking about major, major investment and it just doesn't need to happen anymore.
But just in terms of what would be realistic in the legislature, I think it'd be wise to look at what, any, if any other counties have done something. Because then they would already be a precedent. We could point to something that somebody else in North Carolina has done.
I agree.
It wouldn't be the first time they've done whatever we're providing.
So basically what you're not saying is you're not saying you, because the problem is people will try to put words in your mouth. You're not saying that you're against tourism.
No.
You're not saying that you're against individuals being able to profit by businesses being.
That is correct. And there still may be something in their description that comes out to where there can still be funding that goes to that.
You're basically saying is that you feel like that the markets are even saturated. They know we're here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, we've been discovered.
Doing something. And that's, so there isn't any kind of attempt to tell an individual who's in business, we're not interested in tourism. That's not the case at all. The only thing is you feel like that that money might be better served in another perspective because you feel like it's already saturated.
Yeah.
And I would say give us flexibility where, you know, down the road, if it needed to be spent on marketing again, if the economy went south, there is flexibility for that. Because we don't know what the future.
Let us decide where to spend that money.
But, but to.
That's a good point.
But to have that much money and just continue to spend that much money in the same marketing network.
Right.
Knowing that we're already saturated. I mean, it just doesn't, I'm hoping that our pointees recognize that and are banking some of that money in reserves instead of just going ahead and just spending it anyway, just to, to spend it. Um, so.
You spurred a thought with something you said earlier that I would just like to throw out. I was talking to somebody in another county and they do a training every year for all their appointed board members. Of all the people that they appoint to different boards, you know, maybe we can, so training can include things like how to take minutes. And, uh, even how to run a meeting and that kind of thing. Cause a lot of these folks, we just throw them in it. They have never been trained, never been on the board. So.
That's a good point.
That might be something we could look at down the road as well.
Very good. All right. Well, that's all I have. Has anybody got anything else?
I want to second pass motion.
I'm gonna make a motion with your.
I'll say.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
That's all.